Good morning. Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, regular Board of County Commissioners meeting will now be called to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent reflection for the first responders and members of the armed forces, and we'll have an invocation by Pastor Darasol from the Friendship Missionary Baptist Church. And that will be followed by Commissioner Airman, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance to this great nation. Please rise.
Let us pray. Our Lord and our God, the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, and through our belief in your darling son, Jesus Christ, we have the privilege of calling you our Father. We reverence you for your omnipotence, your omnipresence, your omniscience, the eternity of your being, and for the immutability of your divine counsel. We come to you today asking you for your divine wisdom, knowledge, and understanding for this board of commissioners. We're asking you for your guidance, Lord, because you are holding this body of commissioners responsible for being impartial, honest, and committed to be just in all of their ways. In order to do so, we know that any form of biasness must be left at the door while allowing the abundance of true justice to reign. Therefore, we are praying for wisdom for them to advocate and to stand firm for that which is right. Lord, you've given us the privilege of asking you for wisdom necessary to perform the task at hand. And you said that you would give it liberally and upgrade it not. Lord, we're praying that this body may be successful in the charge that has been given to them. We do understand that this success is not measured in the eyes of man, but ultimately measured by your divine standards. So we're asking you for your divine empowerment to them to execute their charge as unto you. Lord, when you lead them, justice will reign throughout this county. When you lead them, all may not agree with the decisions that are made, but we know that it would be fair and in your sight. When you lead them, peace will reside in their hearts because it pleases you. When you lead them, they will feel your abiding presence in all that they say and do. Lord, when you lead them, they will feel heaven smiling upon them all the days of their lives. Lord, after this all said and done, it is our desire for them to hear your voice say, "Well done, my good and faithful servant. You have been faithful over a few things; thus you will make them ruler over so much more." Lord, we know that you are able to do exceedingly abundantly above all that we may ask or think. Therefore, we make these petitions and surrender ourselves to your divine will, for it is the majestic and holy name that we ask it all. Amen and amen.
Well, good morning, all. At this time, are there any additions, deletions to the agenda on the board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to delete 14C, which is relevant to Calcutta Drive dock license agreements, and have that rescheduled for either the first meeting in April or the second meeting in April. After each party, all parties involved have an opportunity to more thoroughly review the matter.
Okay, we have a motion to delete 4C.
14.
14C.
Yes, sir.
And it's been seconded. We'll certainly be happy to... All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. So item 14C regarding Calcutta Drive docks will be rescheduled. Are there anything else? I'd like to move the presentation, the recycling event that's scheduled at the end of the meeting as our employee can go back to work and present, have you all notified, and then go on to making this a better place.
Those of you from Calcutta no longer need to be here today. Thank you for your time.
I want to move that, and I'll also add a brief announcement to items not to be voted on regarding the Jackie Robinson Celebration Game.
If that's all the changes, I'll be happy to move the agenda as amended.
Which item was it for SWED 16?
16B4.
16B4?
Paper shredding event.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then Commissioner Fletcher added an announcement.
Brief announcement. Is there anything else? And we have a motion and a second. We have a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Commissioner Law. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. We have no proclamations or presentations, but we will be moving Sue's presentation on the recycling event right up to the very forefront.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning. Jill Brown, we're here to announce our spring paper shredding event that we have every year, spring and fall. It's on April 12th from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Southeast Secure Shredding. We partner with Waste Management and Southeast Secure Shredding to bring this free public event to everyone. We get lots of calls about it, so we're very excited to have that. And it's coming up very quick, April 12th. Any questions?
How many pounds of paper do you typically see or shred, or I don't know, is there...
Yeah, we...
Is it the same as the end weight, I guess?
We diverted 6.5 tons at our last one.
6.5 tons of paper shredded?
Turned into toilet paper, yes.
Awesome, that's fantastic. Those are great numbers. Please never bring a visual aid because that's entirely too much paper, but...
Yes.
It's always a good time. I know a lot of people look forward to it. So thank you, guys.
Yep.
April 12th.
April 12th, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Southeast Secure Shredding.
Okay, is there a limit?
Three boxes, 35 pounds each.
Three boxes, 35 pounds, okay.
Yep.
I'm planning out which closets of paper I'm gonna...
And they take it right out of the car for you, so you don't have to get out of your car. It's just a drive-through.
Just a drive-through and pop it. Oh, you can't make it any easier.
Yep, super easy, super fast, yep.
Thank you, guys.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Look forward to it. It helps our environment and reduces our landfill. Thank you. All right, well, the next item was approval of the minutes. You all had the chance to see the minutes.
Yep, they're on...
You reviewed the minutes because they were not in the printed copy, but we've adjusted that.
I got mine right here.
Just wanted to ensure that everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes.
I get mine online, so they're always there.
They're on online.
Mm-hmm, makes it easy.
We want to move approval for the regular meeting of December 3rd, 2024.
I'll move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And the next item is the regular minutes for December 17th. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move on to items that do not need any discussion. Just public notice that the hospital district's public official bonds have been posted with the clerk. So they're all in order. The event calendar is very robust, and I urge everyone to go to the internet or the backup for this agenda as there are plenty of things to be doing in Indian River County. I also, I want to thank staff. I also wanted to give us an early alert that the Jackie Robinson Celebration Game is coming back, and it will be here at the Jackie Robinson Stadium on April 15th, 2025. 6:42 is game time, and the gates open at 5:00. And $10 advance tickets, and the tickets will be at unitedwayinieriver.org. We'll have a presentation on the 25th, but I want to give the early birds the opportunity to know that we are having a game in our stadium. Thank you. Is there anything else that anybody wants to discuss? At this time, we will move on to public comment and agenda-related matters, except for any public hearings. Is there anybody that wishes to come forward to speak about any of the agenda-related items that will not be present later on? Having given... Yes, sir.
Would it be appropriate to speak about the Mirage Homes development right now? Which is on the agenda?
It's a public hearing, sir.
Yeah. You'll have an opportunity during the public hearing to speak.
Is it appropriate now?
No.
Okay.
Not appropriate. But that's... Anything else? Having given fair and equal opportunity to be able to come forward, we move on to the consent agenda. Like to pull item 9D Delta and item 9 in November.
Thank you, I was gonna pull N.
You were pulling N, Isabel? Okay. Easy a lift. Is there anything else? Seeing none? We have a motion by Commissioner Airman, seconded by myself, to approve as amended. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I did pull item D Delta, authorization to increase blanket purchase orders. I'd like to have an open discussion on the nexus to raise the value of indiscriminate expenses being distributed without approval from the county administrator or the board as well. Any administrator?
Yes, Mr. Chair, these items, they typically be done, I don't know if Kirsten's here, but they've typically been done, you know, by being brought back. And what the staff is seeking is to, these are items, and you can see where the, like, take the first item, utilities, pipeline construction, directional drilling. The current amount encumbered is $75,000. The requested amount is $95,000. And then the last year spent was $88,750. So they're looking to, in the interest of efficiency and time, be able to increase those as may be warranted in the event of a, you know, an issue where they need to do the, they need to do the directional drilling. Then you also have a similar one as it relates to concrete patching. In that case, the amount encumbered is $75,000. The amount requested was $158,000. That was approved by the budget. And if you look at the prior year spending, it was $109,000. Again, looking to expedite and create opportunities to achieve efficiencies if that concrete patching needs occur and they need to, they go over the $75,000, but $158,000 was approved in the budget. And then lastly, you have Sandridge Golf Pro Shop inventory. As you will note, there's three different vendors, Acushnet Golf, which is FootJoy and Titleist Inventory, Callaway, and then Roger, or Cleveland Golf, or Srixon Inventory. And in each of those cases, it exceeds the $75,000 amount that's encumbered, but it was budgeted at, you know, respectively $100,000, $120,000, and $100,000. So the versus, we're coming to the board now in advance because we've come to them after. And so we're coming in advance, recognizing that this inventory, at least related to the golf shop and the other items, will be needed. So we're just asking for that permission in advance.
We've already moved forward the purchase for the golf course in a past consent agenda item and had a discussion on it. My concern is that it just reduces transparency, fluidity. There's no benefit of raising the value. And I believe that it also may run into some additional cost overruns that are not kept in check or approved, and the general public will have no idea. And when we approve items, we understand that there may be amendments. Those amendments could be brought forward swiftly and approved, or not approved, in front of full view of the public in which we serve. Also, in addition, commissioners will have the opportunity to understand the workings. I believe it reduces the amount of knowledge that is shared as to when events are taking place and changes are to be made. And we're coming into budget season, and we do watch. And I believe it's not appropriate to raise the bar at this time so department heads can spend funds indiscriminately without prior discussion approval or any awareness being made by such actions.
So, Mr. Chair, I fully understand that, but what I would say is these are budgeted at the beginning of the years, at the beginning of the year that you approve. The transparency would be doing it now in lieu of, you know, when it's needed, and it could delay the purchase. And I think one of the things that purchasing and staff have been working on is looking at bringing forth a board agenda item for a policy adjustment because, like, take utilities, some of those pipes will exceed those values real quickly with the current costs. So we're trying to create, as if you look at specifically the pipe, the drilling, as well as the concrete, the ability to act efficiently in a responsive manner. And then when it comes to the pro shop inventory, it has been on the consent agenda every time or processed and then processed in the budget amendments subsequently, if it increased the budget. But in these cases, these amounts were already budgeted at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Because they were also brought to us at the county commission and discussed openly in front of, or presented on the agenda for the general public to know how much money we're spending, and in addition, what funds are being allocated, and who's doing the purchasing.
So this is not amending the budget. These are existing budgeted amounts that were approved by the board.
Right, but you want to raise the bar. You want to raise the bar.
I have a question. I don't know, I don't even know where the bar is at this point that we're raising or talking about, but are you asking for this as a blanket or just for these attached items?
Jennifer.
Good morning, Jennifer Hyde, Purchasing Manager. For this, we're just asking for these specific purchase orders. For the, if you look at the Sandridge things, of course, we have to have certain brands of merchandise available to the customers that come in, so we're pretty much restricted to buy only from those providers. So we can't go out to bid for that. So really, what we're asking for is a waiver of the requirement for bids. And so once we go over $75,000 on a purchase order that's not associated with a bid or a contract, that exceeds the administrator's authority, and that's when we bring these requests to you. In the case of the utilities work, a lot of times that's emergency, so we have a certain dollar amount on that purchase order. But if we have a repair and we need to fix some concrete, we need to have the wiggle room on that purchase order to have the funds available to have that contractor come out and make those repairs. So this is kind of a preemptive, we expect we're gonna have to allocate this much money on this particular vendor for this amount, and we're just trying to bring it to you all ahead of time so it's pre-approved and we're not coming after the fact saying, hey, we had to have Pete's come out and fix this concrete, and it's gonna cost this much.
Okay, so let me ask you a question about the process and the paperwork that we're given. It says the total amount requested for fiscal year, like, let's use the pipeline construction company. The total amount requested for fiscal year '24, '25 is $95,000. You guys have encumbered 75. Is that because currently that is as high as you can encumber without coming to us?
Yes, that's it. So the county administrator has approved from 35 to 75 because that's his authority level.
Okay, but last year you spent $88,750.
Yes.
So that's over the allowable, and you had to come to us to ask for that to go higher.
Yes, and we did.
So are you, in my opinion, I don't know unless I'm missing something, this is to try to make the process more efficient?
Correct.
Which is what we have asked you to do, I think, a couple of months ago, six months ago, maybe eight months ago, and I know you're working on it. The purchase process takes so long that we lose pricing while we try to get meetings and get all it through there. So I think the transparency comes in this discussion, which I appreciate you bringing up because I think it's very important everybody understand that and be on the same page. Is this something, John, that could be included in that monthly report that you give us on administrative approval? So if there is something for these particular four, we know when and how it's being spent up into that budgeted amount?
It's a quarterly report, but yes, we could include it on there, yes.
Okay, so I don't know if that helps us keep track of it, but I can understand, especially in the current vendor economy, that trying to lock in prices while they're low, instead of waiting to get on a commission meeting and/or having to make the decision and hope that, you know, it works out, can continue to raise prices on some of our projects. I don't know specifically about the golf industry, but even in food prices, you know, we are trying to stockpile certain things that the prices are expected to go up on. And I wouldn't want to hamstring something like that and end up costing us more money. Those are just my two cents on it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael Zito, Deputy County Administrator. Commissioner Adams, you're exactly right. In the case of Sandridge, it's more, think of it as a rolling inventory. So we just look at last year's sales to project what we're gonna sell this year for that particular brand, but we don't want to buy it all at once. So we have a rolling stock, and when we get low, we need the ability to order. And then there's timing, delivery, and then, of course, display for sale. So that's all time consumption that we try to time in advance, and this gives us the flexibility. But we just budget, you know, 5% to 10% over last year, and it seems to be fairly close each year. But it does go over $75,000, in which case it triggers the formality of asking you for permission.
I think we're mixing metaphors. I understand about emergent matters and, you know, fractured sidewalks, and we have to... And we have to, that's been done in the past, though. And my concern is we raised the bar for the county administrator. And I don't want any appearances that we're just opening up the checkbook and just letting it be a free-range system. Because we have to be accountable to our taxpayers. We have to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollar. You all have to be as well. And I know you, you do a great job in, in, in watching those dollars and ensuring that they're done. But raising the limits may reduce the fact that, of awareness and information about these decisions. I think you already, you already have the ability to repair that sidewalk if necessary. I mean, that, that's an emergent matter. I just wanted to brought to your attention that we're not indiscriminately opening up the checkbook. And I do feel a little more comforted that it will be on the quarterly report of authorized, see, I did not know that it would go to the authorized list because this was beyond your authorization. And I thought it was extending. It was, the perception is that it's extending it to department heads and purchasing and that there's no controls. I think it's very important that we're accountable to the public in which we serve. And they pay taxes and we sure know how to spend that money. But I want to ensure that it's done properly, fairly, transparently. And I want a well-informed public. And we need to be informed as well because we get the questions, too.
You know, I will assure you that staff is equally, you know, concerned about the accountability and the expenditure of dollars and monitoring those as well. The department heads all the way up, even managers here all the way up.
Mr. Chair, I really appreciate you bringing this forward so we could have this discussion to make sure everybody understood from the commissioners to staff to the public exactly what this means. So with that, and John, if you'll just include these items in the quarterly update, I'd be happy to move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Commissioner Moss. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would remind this body that in the month of Jan, in the month of July annually, we approve as commissioned to do the annual budget. Additionally, in light of, of recent months with leadership training that we all participate in, we've empowered our leaders to make these types of decisions all within the already approved budget. This is a facet of leadership and management and trusting and empowering our leaders to expedite things when needed to be expedited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Next item is item nine in November, which is the acceptance of the three beach-accessible wheelchairs from Surfing's Evolution and Preservation Foundation, better known as Snap. First and foremost, I, I want to recognize the organization and thank them for their benevolent donation. And it's very encouraging. A lot of people have been asking for this type of device to be able to be made available to those who are, are in need of such a device that wouldn't be able to lug one in from their home or, you know, have a trailer come in and, which now the thought process is, is we accept these three as a donation. We'll be picking, choosing the most popular sites. Two points. I'd like to know how they're going to be stored, how they're going to be deployed. And if so, we have other guarded beaches as well. And I'd like to ask the board to look into the budget to add that so that we have a full complement at each of the locations. But I wanted to recognize the donation. And I'd like to hear of any plans of what we intend to do with them to secure them, to, to make them available to the public and how we're going to provide the service.
Good morning, Commissioners Beth Powell, Parks, Recreation and Conservation Director. And with me, I have Jonathan Billings. He is responsible for our Ocean Rescue and Beach Operations Team. And I'd just like to thank Jonathan for always looking out for the residents, guests, and visitors of our county when they're visiting our county beaches. He's truly remarkable in all ways, from the safety to the operational aspects, as is his team. I'll let him give you a little bit more detail, but I would just like to thank you personally because he saw an opportunity through this grant program to obtain the three beach wheelchairs. That was not something that we had previously been aware of. And we'd like to thank all of the motorists who use the Endless Summer license tags because that's what supports a program that provides accessibility and other improvements for beach accessibility. And Jonathan, will you give us a little detail on where the beach wheelchairs will go? And also, I think there's some upcoming plans to apply for more.
Hi, Commissioners, Jonathan Billings. Currently, what we're going to do is, I thought since we have the three, our best way to go about it would split them up around the county. So one of them is going to go at Golden Sands, which is our furthest north beach. Our center beach is Tracking Station. And then our further south beach is Round Island. So I was going to put them there so we'd have one at each part of the county. Round Island, the beach wheelchair, since we have the new tower there, has storage underneath. We're going to put it under there so the guards can easily access it. Tracking Station, we have a shed in the back. We're going to keep it in the shed and then the guards would walk back and get it when they need it. Currently, Golden Sands, we don't have anywhere, but I'm having in the budget hopefully this year to get a storage shed there, and we'll store it in there. Basically, what I have set up is we'll create some type of signage. So we'll now said we have a beach wheelchair for patrons to use. They could just go up to the guard and ask them. The guard will go back in the back, grab the chair and bring it out to them. And they can use it throughout the day as much as they would like. That's pretty much what we have so far. Any questions?
Thank you. You've answered the question that, that I had there.
No, I just wanted to thank you for doing this. I know this is something that we've been trying to implement across the board with making all of our parks more handicap accessible. And we've incorporated some different pieces of equipment in those and in, in the new designs as we move forward. And I know beach access was something that was, that was high on the list that we've been trying to implement for several years on a larger scale basis. So it's really encouraging to see this happening. And I appreciate you guys finding the grant and I just think this is wonderful. So I, a lot of our residents have been asking for this. And I think it'll go great ways to getting people out and enjoying the amenities that we have. So thank you so much for making this a priority.
Yes, it definitely will add to the public service we provide. So we're, we're happy to have it.
Thank you.
Did this get tied in through the Drown Zero program somehow? Did you all, did we find it that way?
Drown Zero?
I remember that Justin LaFavor talked about it when we talked about the Drown Zero and approved it. And I know that's been very successful.
Yeah, through our workings with Justin and Drown Zero, we were able to find the sponsor and was able to get the beach wheelchairs. So they've been very helpful.
Good.
Working out great.
That's awesome. And Beth, I think we talked a long time ago about the things that go out on the beach for people that maybe you don't, maybe if you don't have a wheelchair or something like that, but they had a wheelchair and it was the thing to take them out on the beach. Could, is that something that, that we need to look at or will this solve that or?
I think this is certainly a step in the right direction. When Tracking Station was damaged during the hurricanes, we had, that was the first time the county had ever put out a Mobi mat. We found that that really provides a lot of accessibility and helps patrons get down to the water's edge. There's some limitations with regard to the DEP permitting that you have to get. But I think some of those longer dune stretches, like perhaps Round Island could benefit from having the Mobi mats in place. They help children and people who have some mobility issues traverse that, that deep sugar sand that we have at our beaches that make them so popular and beautiful. But they can sometimes be difficult to walk on or even just hot, you know, with little kids and things like that. So we'll be looking at some of the other options that we have and seeing what permitting would be required and then putting those in our budget as well.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any motion, sir? Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a, most by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion? Thank you once again. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now moving on to public hearings. That's item eleven A one, which is the first public hearing. And that's the proposed developers' agreement between Meritage Homes of Florida Incorporated and Indian River County. This is legislative in nature.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Councilor.
This morning, I have for you the first of two required public hearings for proposed developers' agreement between Indian River County and Meritage Homes of Florida, Inc. This is the first hearing. The second hearing is due to be scheduled on March twenty-fifth to begin at nine oh five AM or soon thereafter. This is a proposed residential plan development. It consists of two hundred and one single-family lots to be located north of Twenty-Fifth Street Southwest and the west side of Forty-Third Avenue Southwest. And the project is proposed to be constructed in two phases, which will contain, phase one contains one hundred and fifty-three units and phase two contains forty-eight units. As part of the development process, we have, we have brought to you this proposed developers' agreement that is attached here to, to the staff agenda. I will note, and I do apologize, it appears that I had included two copies of the same right-of-way that will be dedicated. We will actually be getting two separate pieces, one, one along Twenty-first and one along Twenty-fifth. And so I apologize, it looks in here like I included the one along Twenty-first twice. So I want to submit this to the record to go ahead and make that substitution so that the record is accurate. So this development, if you're familiar with the south area of the county, it abuts, basically, and it goes straight up onto where our, our county borders, St. Lucie County on Forty-third Avenue Southwest. There are several and numerous improvements that will be going in, including dedication of right-of-way as well as improvements to the roads in the area. Does the, do the commissioners have any questions for me on this topic?
Does anyone have any questions?
No.
I have a question, actually two questions. But the first one is regarding the traffic study, which is dated two thousand and four and uses the standards of two thousand and two thousand and three for a project which, in the traffic study, is expected to be completed by two thousand and seven. Now, we're being asked to use that for a development agreement that would be good for seven years. So you'd be using a two thousand and four traffic study for something that could be developed in two thousand and thirty-two. And it includes, it could be as late as that. And you're still relying on the numbers from two thousand and four. And we all know, the community has already expressed this as part of the urban surface boundary study, the traffic is one of the top three concerns for the, the community at large. So, you know, in addition to that, this traffic study includes Oslo Road. And this is back in two thousand and four. But now we know that Oslo Road is going to change tremendously, certainly by, by two thousand and thirty-two and probably a lot sooner. So that, that's, that's one of my questions.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Baltar, Planning and Development Services Director. So I want to give you a little bit of background on the project itself. This original project started in two thousand and four. So I'm going to read you from a staff report for planning and zoning. So on October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Board of County Commissioners granted PD plan and special exception approval for a two hundred and eighty-eight unit residential single-family project under the name of Tips and Trail. That's what the traffic study is under. On April twenty-eighth, two thousand and five, the Planning and Zoning Commission granted preliminary PL, PD plan approval for Tips and Trips and Trail PD. Subsequently, the preliminary PD plan and plat approval, they started working on obtaining all the required county development permits. And then unfortunately, you know, the recession of two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine had, and the project went dormant. So it did receive all its entitlements back then. Then Meritage Homes came in in two thousand and twenty-one and did a pre-application meeting. At that time, our traffic engineer looked at the traffic study and analyzed it at two hundred and eighty-eight units for that time. Now additionally, back in two thousand and four, there was this whole South County initiative. There was a lot of projects underway that took into account all of the trips. Some of those entitlements have fallen out for those previous developments, which were included to the original traffic study. So that traffic study from two thousand and three, two thousand and four actually is above and beyond what is required of today. The applicant chose to go with the previous traffic study, which includes above and beyond requirements, which are considered into this new PD as a public benefit. In two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, Meritage Homes purchased the site and the developments that were entitled to the project and renamed the project Lakeside West. They also dropped down the units from two hundred and eighty-eight units to two hundred and one units. With any traffic study, obviously, it gets reviewed. Eric Ferguson reviewed the traffic methodology and the actual study in two thousand, uh, two thousand and twenty-one and looked at it and actually said that it, it suffices for today's time because of all the extenuating circumstances and the additional units that had not been put in. And those entitlements fell off. It was above and beyond what would have been required today. That's kind of how we got here and why the traffic study is old. However, it is above and beyond which would be required. Additionally, it's a reduction in units as well.
I appreciate your pointing out that it was looked at in two thousand and twenty-two. But even at that time, Oslo Road was not, you know, and we were not in the situation that we're in today.
Correct.
Oslo Road, and Oslo Road is mentioned, you know, many times in that traffic study. So, but, you know, I just, I don't see how it can be relevant. Also, it, it relates not only to the traffic but to the, of the monies involved. And this is number three in the developers' agreement is that it's considered to be one hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars would be contributed. That's considered to be a fair share contribution for intersection improvements at Forty-third Avenue Southwest and State Route sixty. So if, you know, if we're using, not only could it be a problem in terms of traffic, but I don't know that this is an appropriate amount for, you know, basing it on a two thousand and four traffic study, with all due respect. So my second, my second question, which I don't know, has, has to do with you. But number sixteen in the developers' agreement states, "The site is also located within a special flood hazard area as designated by the flood insurance rate maps." And, you know, interestingly, today we have the vulnerability study on the agenda. And for the community, that has to do with flooding in the main part. And you'll, you'll hear more about that later. But, you know, how long are we going to continue to approve things that are in special flood, a special flood hazard area? I mean, that's maybe not a question for you, but, you know, we'll, we'll have that presentation later today. But I just, I just don't, don't see where it makes sense that we're, if we're going to be concerned with it, you know, we can't continue to behave in this manner.
I, I can answer that. And I appreciate your concern, Commissioner. However, with all new developments and, and pretty much for the whole county, we're in a flood zone. So when we develop, we actually develop and pull those out of the flood zone. So as development handle, goes into the development phase, what they do is they balance out the fill for the actual neighborhood. And then they submit a submission to the flood plane. Excuse me, it's considered a LoMar CloMar. So it's the, actually submitted to the federal and state to remove the site out of the flood plane. After they do all of the needed improvements, they then pull that section out of the flood plane. So then it would no longer be in the flood zone and it would no longer require flood insurance. That's one of the major things that is nice about neighborhoods developing is that we have them pulled out of the flood zone because of that reason. Now, when it comes to neighborhoods outside of the flood zone, so impacting other areas, the historic discharge is not allowed to be any more than what is currently at the site as well. And I'll have our public works, if there's more questions on it. That's just a little brief overview. But our public works director and county engineer, I'm sure, can explain it a lot more than I can.
Most of the complaints that I get, and I can't speak for the, my four colleagues, but they're about traffic or flooding, you know, the majority, especially flooding. but they're about traffic or flooding, you know, the majority, especially flooding. Flooding is a huge issue all around the county. I don't want to contribute to it in any way. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So the required improvements that Stan Bowling identified, or was identified to stand, those are the improvements that are still going to occur today with the development, correct?
That's correct.
And have the prices been updated to reflect today's costs?
Yes, they have been looked at by our Public Works Department. Obviously, this neighborhood isn't on the hook for all of the requirements. They're only required for their portion of the requirements. So that's why it is proportionate.
So the traffic study just points out what roadways or segments or improvements are required. It doesn't identify the actual price tag to those improvements. They've been recently validated on what the costs were.
Correct.
And these trips, I'm just curious, do these trips, have they carried forward in subsequent analyses in terms of as somebody's come in to ide, to develop additional property, were these vested trips already, in the background, traffic included?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President Adams? Oh, go ahead.
Thanks. Thank you for asking that question, John, because I was going to ask how the different traffic studies layer upon each other, project over project, but.
Sure.
That, you just take it into account, is that why an older traffic study can still be valid?
Yes. So if I could explain a little bit deeper, so any traffic study or any traffic analysis is a snapshot in time. So we look at that snapshot to look at what's, what are the conditions going on, what is being entitled and what's being vested. At this time, when this traffic study was being done, all of the neighborhoods were vowing for vest. So at that time, it was even more of an impact on the road network. Yes, Commissioner Moss, I understand, you know, the severity of the interchange opening in 2027. However, those trips, because it's not a snapshot in time yet, we can't count those fully. We do take into account it, but we can't count those fully. As in the old traffic study, it, it was above and beyond because there were so many developments coming online, all of the traffic for that South County Initiative was taken into place and worked out heavily. That's why a lot of the neighborhoods, unfortunately, because of the recession, pulled back. There was a lot of traffic improvements that were required, and we were very advantageous as a county to require it. It was something very bold and noted for the County Commission and also staff at that time.
What are they, who sets the parameters for how a traffic study is conducted and what information is gathered and what you do with that information?
So there's an ITE manual that our engineers go off of, and then usually the way it happens is that there's an outside traffic consultant that is hired by the developer, and then they actually meet with our staff, usually at the pre-app timeframe, to iron out all the methodology. And that's when they actually get numbers of vested trips, what has fallen off, what's stayed on, as, because as projects, you know, don't come into fruition and their vests finally do fall off, those numbers would come off.
How long is the vesting good for?
That's a tricky question. So it depends, five to seven years, but every time we have a natural disaster or anything or the wind blows, the governor does extensions. So with those extensions, this project was from 2004, it got extensions all the way up in 2020, 2012, then it got further extended. So it, it's all a game of chutes and ladders, unfortunately.
Okay.
Those, those extensions, they toll, they continue to build on each other.
Susan, I have a question for you now.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chris. What is the benefit of having a developers agreement versus not having a developers agreement and/or are we required to have a developers agreement in certain scenarios?
We are required to have a developers agreement in certain scenarios. Our code also requires it, for example, if we're having an exchange of some sort of monies for benefits. And it's beneficial because what happens here is it's an agreement, and as with any agreement, both parties have to be held, you know, liable to what they're agreeing to. And in this case, we're agreeing basically to, to honor their, their request to develop at this number, at this amount, and their vestures. However, they're also agreeing to put in whatever's being laid out here, all of the improvements, the monetary compensation, all of that is what they're agreeing to. At any point in time, should the developer basically say, "We're not doing this," so they don't comply with something with this, within this agreement, we can pull it. And a developer, I can tell you, they're not going to be too happy about that. They, they want to make sure that their development is moving. To them, time is, is money. I, I hear it all the time, every day that passes is another dollar lost. So they don't want that to happen. They want to keep up their end of the bargain, and this is a way for us to make sure that they do that, and it's not just mere empty promises made over a negotiating table. It becomes real when it's put down to writing and it's executed in a document. So other, so obviously behind the, the statutory requirements that we have under the Florida statute, it provides both parties with some form of security, so much the developers as it does the counties.
And I think we learned at a prior public hearing that you guys actually review the development agreements on a, is it annual, semi-annual basis to make sure that they continue to stay within compliance?
Yes, ma'am, there is a statutory requirement that has the county to review them on an annual basis to make sure that they are in compliance. If they are not, then we have several remedies we can move forward with.
Thank you. For now.
Commissioner Irwin?
I'm going to simplify some of this, just, just, just for, for me and maybe some of the others. We're looking at allowing another development down to, right next to one that we approved with Emerson Oaks recently. The developments that are already there in place at the corner of Oslo and, and 43rd, the one that's directly south of that, Emerson Oaks, and now this one, plus what's across the street on Oslo Road. 43rd's still a two-lane road down there. I have some serious concerns as to what, if it can take care of that situation, being there is a lot of traffic that goes south to St. Lucie County, comes north, especially at a certain time today. I know when the interchange gets built, hopefully, some of those people will use the Oslo Road and go down the interchange and use the interstate, but. Is the, does the traffic, the, the traffic study was done in 2004? I understand you said it's, it's more rigid than the one we have now, but I'm trying to think in today's time that that road has a very good possibility until we see what the Oslo Interchange does in '27 and how many people use that, of being, 43rd of being basically way, in my opinion, way over capacity. And I am certainly not a traffic engineer. I'm just a guy that travels that road quite a bit. And I don't know if I'm just making a statement or asking a question, since I'm, I'm, I'm kind of so confused in regards to this, but Chris, is there any, is there any merit to what I'm, to what I'm alluding to? I mean, I, I don't know, it just seems like that's a whole lot of pressure on a two-lane road and it's short and not a fairly long distance.
So for your question, Commissioner Irwin, I'm going to have to defer to the county engineer because that's a little bit deeper than what I can explain.
Okay, well, they're here. Maybe they can help me out. I'm, I'm trying to.
Hold on. Will you? Will you restate the question, because I'm not exactly sure what is being asked, because I want to understand as well.
I don't know if I may, I'm just saying, with all that development, with the, with the one we just approved, and if we approve this one, we're talking a two-lane road with, with houses on both sides of the road in the Oslo corridor with the traffic that it gets from the greater part of the county going south in the morning or, or north in the morning or in the afternoon the same way. Is it, is, is this going to work with, with those developments down there? I mean, can we make this work on a two-lane road? I mean, again, and Commissioner Adams, I apologize, I may not know what I'm asking.
If Oslo opens in.
I'm just trying to put it in my mind.
If Oslo opens in '27, I mean, I think part of this is, I understand the concern, believe me, I live in a town that has a two-lane road in and out, and it's, I get it. But if, this is the developers agreement, they still have to come back for other, like site plan and stuff like that. I mean, or they, there's other steps in the process. It's not as if they're going to build this first phase tomorrow and all those, all that traffic could be on the road.
I get that, I understand that.
And then Oslo will be open in '27. I mean, there's some moving parts here, but I understand the concern, so I don't know the answer to the question, I'm sure.
So could I just comment one thing? So we're not approving the development. I just want to, I think it's important to note that this project was approved back in 2007, was it, Chris?
Yes, sir.
2006? And with the tolling of every, every time there's a natural emergency or some disaster and there, there's provisions of tolling, it's still valid, is that correct? So it is still, it's valid at 288 units. So this development agreement, which you're being asked to approve, reduces it down to 201 and codifies the improvements that the developer will be making. So this, so I just want to be clear, this development is approved at 288 units. If anything, this is reducing the number of actual units by 87 and codifying the improvements for that are required.
I understand all that, but I'm just trying to think, you know, you put, you know, 200 homes there, plus what we already, what we approved with Emerson Oaks, which is right adjoining next to it on the south, plus what's there already. I guess I'm just wanting to hear with the engineers, is it capable with the Oslo Interchange opening and all that stuff? Do we, do we feel that the, that, that the traffic on 43rd in that area of the county is, is, is the two-lane road can handle it?
Good morning, Honorable Commissioners. Adi Javed, Public Works Director. To answer your question, Commissioner Irwin, I'll use a simple analogy building on what John just said. So if you're looking at the entire area back in 2004, you know, if there were like thousands units being built, right now, that number has gone down. So based on that information, the number of trips in that area would be less, and the, the infrastructure system that we have out there would be able to handle the traffic. That would basically be the result of this new development coming in.
Okay, I mean, as lo, as long as, I mean, it's just thinking about it again, I'd probably make it clear, because I'm no traffic engineer.
You have some valid observations.
I'm just saying that with this developers agreement, when this thing moves forward, are we going to be, have our backs against the wall and, and have, you know, have the whole area down there backed up with traffic until maybe the Oslo Interchange gets opened? Is that going to help curtail some of the things? I'm just kind of throwing it out there, that's all.
Absolutely, duly noted, and you have valid observations, but just like I said, right now, the total number of units that will be built out there versus, you know, the study that was done back in '04 identified, you know, is less. So that's one of the reasons why staff, when they looked at it, feels that, you know, the requirements right now are above and beyond what would be required based on current situation.
I can't forget, we're going to have a school down there at one, some point in time, supposedly too, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's just, you need to watch in the future, so.
Absolutely, we will keep an eye on it, sir.
Commissioner Law?
That's all I can ask.
Mr. Chair, if I can try to round the bases on this particular topic. One, there was a mention of flooding, and I just want to address that quickly, and I'm not so sure that Adi is the expert in this, but when a site plan is submitted and ultimately goes through the channels, in modern days, that development is required to handle all of its runoff stormwater. Some people call them lakes or ponds, they're actually stormwater retention, which in fact, in the long run, helps the homeowners and the builders by, as Chris mentioned, getting out of the flood plain. So I don't think we should have that large fear of flooding. Second, Chris, when your traffic engineers that are subcontracted by the developer create a traffic methodology, generally speaking, they're, they are professional organizations that are subbed via the constructor, isn't it true that a major, all of those are from accredited associations?
Yes, and, and our own traffic engineers follow the same ITE manual that.
Correct. So in other words, there is objectivity from the traffic consultant to the county as well as the contractor.
Correct.
And finally, Mr. Chair, with respect to this traffic that we're hearing on 43rd, myself travel that as well as apparently Commissioner Irwin, and when you do travel 43rd north and south at peak times, you will notice a majority of that traffic is turning right and heading west on Indrio Road to get on 95 to go south, more than likely. I would submit that the Oslo Interchange will alleviate that southbound and northbound traffic. So I know we have further comments, Mr. Chair, but I would motion to approve.
Well, I'll have to wait and see.
I know.
On the, on the public hearing, I appreciate that. You know, hearing these, the comments and, and having staff address it as we're talking about a developers agreement, I, I just want to recommend, I know I have, I'm going to recommend that you all ride one of these pre-apps and identify how complicated the, the traffic study truly is and what is brought forward during that time, that this is not just thrown to us after it's been looked at tacitly.
Correct.
This is a very in-depth study. I don't think that anybody's aware of how much time and effort goes into the traffic study and the ability to adjust the traffic study and look at the flood plain and adjust it. We have trained professionals, and they're not going to let anything compromise our great county. They, they're in this to make this a better place, and that's what I have witnessed. And I also want to encourage, once again, all of you, to take the time, ride through a pre-app or look at the analyzation process as it's happening. I know I've sat down many times with different individuals as well, and it has been very enlightening, informative, and probably would not have had some of the thoughts that we heard today. Okay?
Mr. Chair, can I just clarify the motion, because I believe the motion is to.
Well, there is no motion yet.
That's it.
Okay. And just that it's to move it forward to the March 25th meeting, the second hearing. That's what we're asking today.
That's correct.
Okay.
But thank you, Counselor, I appreciate it. Yes, you're excited.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions of, of staff at this time, now that we've brought many members to the table? We'll now open this public hearing. Please come forward, sir. State your name and address for the record so we can hear you.
My name is Frank Moore. I live at 4435 Ninth Manor Southwest. I can appreciate all the colleagues here that actually think that the traffic would be minimized. If you actually look at the total development, that would mean 400 cars. Currently, it takes me about five minutes to get out of my development, which is at Amber Lakes, right across the street from our friends at Publix, who've actually done a wonderful job, and I have to admit, for the 12 years that I've lived here, it's been a great experience. My basic training is I'm an architect, I come from New Jersey, I've been a school architect for 45 years, and actually, I'm still practicing at the age of 75, and we're actually developing conical wind turbines that are basically going to be placed around the world. But I want to bring something that you might not think about. Currently, with the 201 applications that we have here, the total consumption of water would be around 17 million gallons per year. Currently, this county is actually under service in reference to the amount of sewage capacity that we have. Currently, they want to actually move the site, which is at the 17th Avenue, and bring it back to the airport. From that point, that's going to take several years. Currently, we have a hold on funding, which actually due to the fact that we have some issues in reference to some logging of information. issues in reference to some logging of information to the federal government. And from that point, it would probably take two to three years to actually get us to the point where you'd have sewage capacity for the 17 million additional gallons. The other issue that I have is reference to the aquifer. We currently would actually pump most of the aquifer down, and from that point, some study should be done. I am not a geotech engineer or an environmental engineer, I'm an architect, but this is some of the issues that I always look at. Have to take a very broad view image of what's gonna occur here. One of the issues that he brought about in reference to flooding, currently the dredging to actually get to the level where you would actually not be in a floodplain would be about six feet. That has to be discussed. From that point, you have to think about what the aquifer is gonna do. And currently, we are under service to the amount of sewage and treatment of that sewage system. So as you look at these applications, not only on this one, but actually further projects, this place is absolutely a gem. If we actually overdevelop it, the Sexton family, when they sold this concept, was only gonna have one house for five acres. We now have four acres, four buildings or four homes per acre. This is a highly clustered development.
That's not true.
So when you look at this and look at our place in which we live, do we wanna make it to look like Disneyland? Or do we wanna go ahead and have a, literally a wonderful environment to live in? So I think, here we are, we're just the citizens here. You're the council, you have to look in a broad view. And I think it'd be a disservice to actually have this level of high clustered development. The Sexton family and, and Audrey actually talked about this, and I spent a lot of time with her. The whole concept was to only have five, one house for every five acres. That level of impact would be minimized. From that point, now we're actually having four houses. Each one of them is on a 10,000 square foot lot. They're practically side by side, they're only 20, maybe less than 20 feet apart. And then from that point, then you have 400 cars, because every family has at least two vehicles. So I think one of the questions that was brought up by Mr. Erdman is, does it actually change the traffic flow? Yes, it does. Are we on a two-lane road? The only way that two-lane road is gonna be expanded is by federal funding, and that has to go all the way down. And you know and I know, federal funding for development on road system probably takes between two and three years just to get some budget together. And by the time they do it, it's actually under budget, or over budget for that matter. So I think as we actually sit here and think about what you would like to do, the question is, the real question would be, do we have enough sewage capacity? Do we have enough water? Not only for this one, but for everything that we do in the county. And then from that point, when you actually look at what Indigo Road would be and where we are on 43rd, we're totally stacked up in the morning. You know, I wait almost like four to five minutes just to get out on the street. So the question is, really, where do you wanna be? And I, I would propose that the council take a moment and think about what you wanna do. And I understand fully that the county wants to go ahead and secure funding for sewage permits and sewage connections and additional ratings and additional income, and I get all that. But I think the biggest thing is, what you want this thing to look like at the finish? Because when I talk to a client, every time that I talk to him as an architect, I always gasp the question, what do you want to look like in five years, 10 years, and 15 years? And the other question I always say, the reason why you're hiring me is to protect you from yourself. Because that's what happens here. You gotta remember, you're the guys that protect us as we sit here. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to say that I also live-
Please identify yourself for the record.
I'm sorry?
Please identify yourself for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going, getting to that. My name is Nancy, or actually Jenny Kuntz. I live in the Fountain, and I've lived there for the last nine years. There is one way in and one way out. And I disagree with my neighbor. This morning, I left my house at 8:00. The line all the way, as far as you could see, coming north on 43rd, you couldn't make a left turn very easily. Took me several minutes, and that was only because a very nice person let me in. I have sat there longer during rush hour. There's also another thing to consider. We have a, probably going to have a Buc-E's going in, south of us. Their traffic is going to increase with traffic going down south and coming back to visit Buc-E's. Another thing, I have several questions here. The public notice that went out indicates that their, the proposal is for a maximum of 388 units. That's a little different from what they are talking about now. So that needs to be clarified on the public notice that went out for this meeting. If I, if we have as max at 388 units, I'm with him, two cars per unit, per house, you're gonna look at an increase of 760 units. We were excited to hear that the interchange at Oslo was going to finally go in and expected that, yes, that would bring down the number of vehicles going on 43rd. However, now we have more units coming in south of us and using 43rd. My question to consider is, what is the correct number and how is that going to really impact the traffic on 43rd? Let's see, I've, just checking my notes real quick. Oh, another big concern I have, and I think we need to look at, is if you have this, this traffic is not just going to go from south up to Oslo and then either make a right or a left to move. It's gonna continue along 43rd Avenue, all the way to 60. That again, is a nightmare for driving in rush hour traffic. It's stop and go, all the way down from Oslo to 60. And then you have the buses that come in the morning at the same time, which creates a nightmare. You also have the garbage trucks that have to pick up garbage along 43rd. All of those are going to be impacted. And so I'd like for you to consider, when you're looking at this project, that you look more broadly and consider the entire thing. I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about the, the traffic study, being so old. I know that they took into consideration that the, it's more stringent and they, than it was, than it is now. However, I think it should be updated. The way that two-lane road is, there's accidents, a lot. I li, we live on the corner of Oslo and, and 43rd, and we've got sirens all day long in that area. Of course, we've got a fire station down Oslo, we got a fire station down 43rd, and it's really consistent. I'm home almost all day, every day. I hear it. I'm concerned, greatly concerned about the number of units that are going in and what it's gonna do to that 43rd traffic. It's pretty bad now. Now during the day, after you get past that rush, rush hour, yeah, I can get out, I can get there and just make a quick left. But if I need to leave earlier or later, I, I'm concerned about having an accident. We came home the other day, my husband had his blinker on and got ready to turn, you know, slow down to turn, and somebody actually beeped their horn because we were in his way. We suddenly turned right, in his view. I really urge you not to, not to approve or consider this without doing something to 43rd Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your input.
I, I also, my name's Denise Armenti, I live at 4425 Ninth Lane. And to be redundant, we can't even get out of our, our place now. And I can't imagine putting anybody, any houses that's gonna, and I know that not all the people, they come down, why they come down 43rd, I have no idea. But a traffic study from 2004? Think about what you were doing in 2004. You know, most of the people weren't even in the area in 2004. So that definitely has to be updated, and as the council people that travel that road, it's, it's horrible, because like she said, you can't make a left-hand turn. And if you wanted to make a right-hand turn and go around the back way down 13th, half that road isn't paved on 58th, so you can't even go that way. So you're either stuck, or you try to hope that somebody will come in and let you go in. And as far as, I never even thought about this till just when they said, emergency vehicles. If something ever happens, how are they gonna even, you know, 'cause it's just packed. There's no way for them to get, there's no side ways for them to get out of the way on 43rd. So if somebody needed an emergency at the wrong time, what are we gonna do? So the traffic study should be updated, 'cause there's definitely a lot more traffic than it was in 2004. I understand about all the houses they approved, but those houses never got built, and we already have the traffic problem. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Wesley Mills with Mills Short and Associates. I'm the engineer of record for the project and also representing the applicant, Mayor Diggs Homes. One thing that I, I just kinda wanna put in perspective and give some perspective on the sequencing of this project. So we went through, this had a special exception approval in the mid-2000s, the Great Recession came. But we also just recently went through preliminary plat process and got approval about a year ago with an updated technical review and all of those things that go into the preliminary plating process. There was a public hearing, we received, I wanna say unanimous approval on the project itself. As, as it relates to the, the traffic improvements, I think Commissioner Ehrman, you had referenced some other projects that just recently came in for approval. We're actually in front of them in the process. So we received our approval probably six months ahead of them, or maybe even a year ahead of them. So as they do their traffic study, they're building in the traffic from our project, and if there were any issues, that would've come up in Emerson Lakes, because that's the one project that wasn't included in the South County Initiative Plan, so they would've had to get a brand-new traffic study. The other thing that I just wanna mention is, this project will be probably the first project since the recession to get built in that South County, that group of projects that were included in the South County Initiative Plan. And the reason for that is, back in the boom, the developers all agreed to all of these off-site improvements and contributions to the county for parks and intersection improvements and those kinda things. And since that time, the market hasn't warranted the project to be able to build the development and pay for all of the things that were included. So the improvements that we're putting in far exceed what would be required going through a standard process reviewing just on the capacity of the county system. Because this was a P D, it has a significant amount of contributions to warrant the development. Good morning.
Marie Chevan, I live in the Fountains of Amber Lakes. I agree with the other people that live there as well. Should not do this project, we can't even make a left turn out of our community. You're in Publix, you're trying to, again, make a left turn out of Publix, so the line of traffic is there, so you're trying to sneak out. Of course, you can't see the other cars coming this way, so you get clobbered. It's horrible. Think about this. We don't need 600 more vehicles on that road. It's a two-lane road. Have you been there? Does anyone live there in this piano? Anyone live there? Thank you. Okay. He's right. Don't consider this project. 2004 traffic study? You've gotta do another one. An updated one. I moved here in 2012. It was fine. It isn't now. It isn't fine now. It's crowded, it's packed. We don't need another 3, 4, 500 homes. After Phase 1, you're gonna do Phase 2 and Phase 3? That's what happens around here, I've noticed that. Well, let's, you know, we've got more grass here, let's build something. The grass is fine. Please. Thank you.
Hello, David Hawkins, I live in the same complex. Coming out, I similarly had some delays getting here, but my thoughts aren't so much, I came from California a couple of years ago. I'm actually from the East Coast, but lived out there for a long time, and I was always shocked at just how dense housing gets. You know, you can see in everybody's window right next door. So what has always been interesting is somehow even out there, they find a way to put a sidewalk and have a road wide enough for people to get in and out. Right now, I drive a car that has the ability to drive autonomously. It pegs itself right down the middle of the lane. When you drive down a lane, two-lane road, and a semi is coming towards you, and the car doesn't adjust, because that's, they're just not built for that yet, you have to take control and almost go off the road. That can be a little bit scary. I think that if you're gonna do something around a traffic study, autonomous vehicles should be considered, simply because they are coming, one way or the other. Something worth putting into, into play. And, and the fact that that road has zero walkability, once you get past the current communities, I assume and hope that that would be part of the plan, that if there's gonna be another community, you'll have some kinda sidewalk or at least a little bit of room. There's no biking down that road, there's no way. You're, you're gonna get taken out. Same thing with walking. So if the community's gonna be approved and go in, I would hope that we would be thinking about expanding that road somehow. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah? Anyone else that wishes to add to this public hearing? We'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, as a reminder, this is the first public hearing, and there will be another one on March 25th.
I did, we have the benefit of having our, our chief public works engineer here, and we've, we've heard some public comment regarding the traffic and the inability to get out of the Fountain subdivision. Do we have the record of assessment of getting in and out of that particular subdivision? And was there warrant study, was there a warrant study done for light?
Good morning, Commissioners, Adi Javed. My understanding is that we did look at that information, and it wasn't warranted, but what we can do is that, based on the feedback from the residents today, we will go back and look at it one more time, just to make sure, you know, there's nothing else that we missed. But in terms of the input, the data collection and everything so far, you know, based on the information we have and our analysis, the, the study from 2004 exceeds the requirements or, as, as previously stated by, by the staff.
And I understand they do, and that was reflected in what has transpired. I just wanted to assure the public that, that is a consideration as well, and that you're going to look at it once again.
Absolutely, sir.
Since this is the first of two public hearings, and we'll have the opportunity to be able to disseminate that, even though that's not changing the, the application, and moving forward, this is one of two public hearings, so we might have an, an opportunity to be assured.
Yes, sir. We will circle back with the additional information as, as suggested.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I will note, I did get a copy of the publication, and it does say that the proposed density is 201, the maximum is 380. But if you look into the Paragraph 2 of the developers' agreement, it specifically notes that it was previously approved for 201 units. So it will be stuck to the 201 units and not the 380 units. I just wanted to put that on the record for anyone's edification.
Thank you. And could we have that as well? That'll be submitted to the...
I will.
For record of this.
Yes, sir. I have a copy here.
Thank you for breaking forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor.
May I ask a question? Susan, that, does that mean that the developer would be entitled to 380 under our code, but is agreeing to only develop the 201?
Correct. That's what's happening. They're entitled to more, but they're actually building less. Correct.
And I think that was pointed out by the county administrator earlier, that they did have the approval to go forward with the larger amount. And I believe Chris as well, Chris Balter, had mentioned that that was the original intention. So I understand why there would be a difference in thought and the reduction. Perfectly makes sense as to the presentation and the numbers and the understanding of the traffic study, when you've reduced those numbers so greatly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, then the recommendation for staff is just that if we could get a motion to come back for the second hearing.
Well, we'll ask the board and see what we get.
Thank you.
I'll be happy to entertain a motion. And that's a motion by Commissioner Law. Seconded by Commissioner Erman. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Opposed, no.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Moss dissenting.
Thank you, Commissioners.
See you soon. It's 10:30. We have another public hearing. What's your pleasure? Would you like to... We will be taking a brief recess before we get to the next public hearing. This meeting will now be called back to order. And we're up to Item 11, A2, which is the public camping ordinance. It's legislative in nature. It is a public hearing. Morning, Counselor.
Good morning. We are here for, as Commissioner just stated, a public camping ordinance to be in compliance with Florida statute. As everyone here, I believe, is aware, the Florida Legislature created a bill last year that is 125.0231 that requires counties to have a prohibition on public camping, sleeping in the streets, sleeping on public property and camping on property not designated for camping. And so in order to, and to our detriment, if we don't have this ordinance, we don't go through the motions and have this, we can be sued by either public-private citizens or by the Attorney General. And based upon speaking with experts, speaking with other people in the community across the state, every community is going through and having some form of this ordinance, we are able to create even more depth to it, but the easiest way to conform with the statute and try to make sure we protect all communities, including what we currently have here. And I think, well, no system is perfect. The current system we have is doing its best job that we can with the current resources to keep our streets safe, but also make sure that we're worried and we're concerned and caring for the people who are on there and aren't able to go to a home every night. And so this ordinance was drafted in a way to try to, the best way we can, to allow that. We're not looking to criminalize anything. We're not looking to do that. However, to stay with this and to not be sued and be on the hook for attorney's fees and all kinds of fees associated with those civil actions, we created this ordinance. And we are asking the commission to consider it this morning, open it up for a public hearing, take comments, and then direct the staff on whether to amend the ordinance as it's written or have the commission sign it as it is. Yes, sir. We're asking the court, not the court, we're asking the commission to open up the public hearing.
The court.
That's what I was waiting for. I knew it would be a question.
There's always a question. This is the last whereas, recital, I guess I could call it, before the Down Airfore. It says, "To ensure it is clear that public camping or sleeping on any county facility grounds or right-of-way is prohibited unless designated as public camping for recreational use." My question is, should we have, and I hope that we don't, but should we have some kind of huge natural disaster, as they experienced in the state of California with the fires or in North Carolina with an unexpected hurricane? And people are, well, actually, we had tornadoes, and that certainly was unexpected, too. And people are suddenly homeless. Do we need to take that into consideration? Like, would those people, how are we handling that?
Well, I could actually answer that. The man that's at the end of the line here has the power and authority to initiate an executive order in emergent matters. And that's when all the rules can be adjusted accordingly to meet the needs of the emergent matter. It has happened each and every hurricane, every storm event. When we enact, the public wants to know, why are we in emergent matter? We didn't get affected that much? Or why aren't we when there are basic needs? It's an assessment that's done to ensure that we have the proper funding and the ability to authorize the county administrator to be able to move many items that are prohibited or eliminated from his purveyance to address the needs of the emergent matter. And that is why the governor declares a state of emergency to loosen funds and to make rules as they need be made on accommodations to be made as well. And the county administrator has that same authority. Otherwise, we would have to meet as a board and move that forward. So it's the executive emergent matter authority.
Thank you for your opinion.
Now, I'd like to have your opinion. Oh, I will say that under the newly passed state law, it is clear that the ability to sue the county does not apply during a governor-declared state of emergency or a state of emergency declared by the county. So that is...
It's right there.
That is written into the legislation.
In addition, you brought that up, there is certain prohibitions about lodging in a governmental building unless there are accommodations. And just as an aside, do you realize the complications if it's not an emergent matter and somebody reads, receives a parcel of mail and they are residing at the county building, that we may be compelled to go through a lawful eviction process over somebody who chose to live at the building or outside the curtilage, which is considered the building itself? And we would further have complications. This truly cleans it up, and I appreciate everything that you've done to get this together, as with most jurisdictions are doing, as you already identified.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anything further? We'll now open up the public hearing. Two microphones. Identify yourself for the record.
Good morning. My name is Ariana Loretano. I work for an agency called Right Life Services. So I wanted to come here today because the specific program that I work for, we serve individuals who are living outside and have severe and persistent mental health. So this ordinance, I have a lot of concerns with because it directly affects the individuals that we serve. And in my opinion, I don't necessarily think that criminalizing homelessness will help solve the problem as far as, like, affordable housing. And it kind of, it perpetuates homelessness and poverty, right? So we have a team for our outreach services to go and engage individuals who are living outside, so we can provide those supportive services. And I think that law enforcement going out and, you know, putting out fines or trespassing or arresting these individuals doesn't really help the issue of homelessness. And the point of our program is to address the underlying problem of homelessness. So whether that be, like, mental health concerns, you know, affordable housing, income, you know, whatever that may be. be. And with this ordinance in place, it would make it hard for us to go engage individuals who are living outside because they move and we can't provide them services. If we know they stay in a certain area, it's very hard for us to be able to support them in that way, right? And so as an agency, we're also in Indian River County Jail to provide those services to try to come up with a plan. So when they do come out, we can figure out what it looks like for them to, you know, get some sort of sustainability, whatever that looks like for them, right? So I think this ordinance would create more trouble than help because it adds to their criminal record. And in all honesty, they don't really have anywhere else to go. I mean, you know, whatever the circumstances may be. So I think this ordinance wouldn't really help as far as, you know, getting them the services that they need. And it would make it harder on us to provide those services for them. And the amount of money that it takes for these people to go into the jails and, you know, for being trespassed or whatever the case may be, I think should be used for more of like affordable housing and, you know, providing more of those supportive services, you know, so we can help further support them in that matter. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your program is well admired, well needed, and I don't believe that this derails any of the process, the great process that you're doing in helping others lift their lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marty Mercado. I'm the Executive Director at Hofer Family Center. So for me, I just wanted to bring about the topic of the children that are suffering from housing instability. Last year, during our current fiscal year, we served 141 children that were in the school system and trying to be, adapt to what is going on around them while their parent is already in crisis. During that time, while they're searching for solutions as a family, they sometimes have to publicly camp. There is no other option for them. We just had a family leave our shelter last week who publicly camped for three or four months, going from location to location. And when we got them, they were able to stay with us and we were able to keep them for six months and they just moved out into a trailer. But if her parent, if this, the children's parents had gotten arrested, it would have added already to their crisis that they're already having. So I ask that we continue to work together as a community to tackle what is going on with the homeless in our area. I ask that we work together with a coordinated entry system, which myself and Matt Tanner are chairing for the area, to try to have more accessible options for needing services, for having housing instability. Excuse me. And I ask that we continue to look at homelessness with an overview of collaboration. Thank you.
Good morning. Meredith Egan, United Way of Indian River County. So we recognize that this is required by state. It's not something that you can just excise completely, but we wanted to talk about some of the implications. You know, first responders, the three of you, we know that this ordinance forces law enforcement to, law enforcement officers to now act as de facto social workers, diverting them from addressing the real public safety concerns. United Way just hosted Powered by Purpose, featuring Sheriff Eric Flowers. We talked about mental health, diversion courts. Mr. Tucanich was there and, you know, we're seeing the lowest numbers in the jails right now. This is not something law enforcement wants to take on. We want to lean on and leverage the social service organizations that are available. And the ordinance, as it states right now, there's really not a connection to those services. So if we could consider maybe amending it to reflect some sort of referral to the coordinated entry that Marty referenced, that would be really helpful. It costs more to jail someone for a day than to provide them with shelter and services. The incarceration obviously costs taxpayers dollars. We know that there are other cities and counties that are addressing this ordinance in more innovative ways and considering alternative approaches such as investing in emergency shelters, increasing available housing solutions and expanding outreach services. So we're urging you to consider some of those alternative routes.
Good morning. Remy Knuckles, CEO, Treasure Coast Homeless Services Council. Sorry, I broke my glasses this morning. I'm trying to use an older pair and you guys are really blurry, so forgive me for that. Hopefully, I can get through this. I want to thank each of you for allowing the public hearing today. And I acknowledge the colleagues that are in the room. There were a couple of board members who were here and had to leave. We want to acknowledge that the county's efforts in addressing these concerns around public spaces, we understand this is a formal process and that you're required to respond to this House Bill 1365 in such a way. However, as we consider the ordinance, I urge the board to approach, to take an approach that ensures individuals are not just displaced but meaningfully connected to services. I would like to respectfully recommend an amendment that would require law enforcement prior to removing individuals from public property to immediately contact the homeless continuum of care. Our coordinated entry system ensures that individuals experiencing homelessness have access to support by multiple organizations in the COC. There are outreach teams that are available during the day. And we have digital systems that would allow law enforcement to make referrals outside of business hours. We'd be more than happy to collaborate with county leadership and law enforcement to develop a seamless process for this. I appreciate your time and your consideration and urge to ensure that this ordinance, if passed, works in tandem with proven strategies to reduce homelessness in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy.
Yeah, my name is Christian Hammershold. Actually, didn't even know this was on the agenda. I'm on the board of the Homeless Children Foundation. And I just want to echo the voices and the recommendations of all the other organizations. I think all of us work together to address the issue of homelessness. So anything you guys can do would be very beneficial. And I will echo one thing. The minute you get law enforcement involved as opposed to trying to take advantage of some of the resources of these organizations, it just makes it so much harder for the families and the kids to get out of that. It just digs a deeper hole. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lalita Jenke and I live in Indian River County. I support all these people that have come here to speak on behalf of homelessness. I would urge you all to see if we could get together, they could get together and find a solution, compassionate solution that wouldn't put, these men that have been, men and women that have come out of the jail system, or people that due to the economic conditions that they find themselves in, if they could be housed just for a little while in the consortiums that we already have existing, if you all could please postpone this or tone it down so it, we don't penalize them even further so that these people will never get a way to be established people in the community. And it affects their children. They, even people that come out of jail have families. And while they're in jail, they lose their car, they lose their home, they lose everything. And where are they to go? We've got to find a system, a humane system to support them. And if there's anything I can do, I would love to be able to do it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. You know, there are many, many programs that exist that are allowing people to rise upward from their situation, condition. And you're aware of them too. I know that, Lalita. And thank you for your support of those programs. No, I hear law enforcement being brought up. And yes, a few of us were involved in that capacity for many years. One of the things that missed the most is lifting lives and crossing the paths of those who are living in the woods that you may or may not be aware of. And there are, there are encampments and people are trespassing on other people's property and they set up a dwelling. And I wanted to say that, you know, we're concerned about law enforcement getting involved. I don't want to paint a, paint a picture of the criminalization of such a ghastly act. There were times where I walked in, talked, walked into their home in the woods and talked with them. You know, many of those people are relocated back to their families. Many of those people drew other things and mechanisms that we're able to accomplish through non-customery forms of law enforcement. It's called encouragement. It's called being a good law enforcement officer and addressing a problem, a challenge, and getting a solution. And a lot of that is done. So I don't want, I'm hearing that it's, you know, we're going to start dragging people off to jail and emptying out their cars and taking all their possessions and they'll be away in cuffs. No, it's just a prohibition of public camping, public environment, living, living. Would you like to see people lined up on the streets and in the sidewalks as you do in some jurisdictions that have allowed such a process? That's what it's about. Nobody's saying that any of the programs should be eliminated. Nobody's saying that any of the driving force to lift people's lives up. Well, we're not far away from an organization that does it every day. And many of us do that too. And I just want you to know that, that this is not an onerous act of eliminating anybody. Just, this is not a NIMBY. This is the allowances so that we can conduct ourselves as a well-regulated society and that people do have property rights. And you, the people, have property rights for this very building that we operate in government and any governmental building. So it's a lot more than just worrying about a couple of people sleeping in a car somewhere because there are programs. I just wanted to clarify it, that there is compassion and there's understanding for mankind across the board. There are, I've worked two cases this week to ensure that kids can go to school and there's a house that they can come home to. And it's very difficult. Remy spoke, his budget is very limited. And he's being very creative. And the caps, the federal caps and the state caps, and what we have to offer are limited. But it's being done. It's just being done in an orderly address as opposed to people just flooding a park and calling it home. It's, that's not the solution because that breeds other challenges that occupy force, that doesn't, doesn't generate any help for anyone. I think we have to be geared towards looking at this ordinance so that we can go forward and treat people the way they need to be treated and not as migrants on the street. Thank you.
If I could clarify a few things, Chairman, if I could clarify a few things about the ordinance?
Yes.
In Section 4, it includes what the violations could be. And I want to make sure I use the word could because we included that it is may. After warning and after refusal to move to work with anybody, at that point, then they may be subject to penalties if law enforcement chooses to. There is no automatic, it actually says they cannot arrest or cannot do law enforcement until they've given them an opportunity to move along or to not be camping on a public street. And the public camping term isn't clarified very well just in that term. It specifically, I think, Commissioner, you stated it is, it's on streets, it's on right-of-way, it's on county property. It's not, if somebody's out in a field and somebody's private property, that's still private property.
Right.
And it does not include cars. Specifically, the statute says, living in a car, if you have a car and you're in a parking lot, that is not the same thing. It specifically refers to sidewalks, streets, public right-of-way, you said the curtilage out in front of this building, something of that nature would be. And again, it includes, they must be warned and refused to move along. It's not, they warned them once and they came and saw them the next day and then they, they must be warned and refused. And I would say, just to be clear, law enforcement already is involved, unfortunately, in this matter because, and I heard, to their credit, I heard Sheriff Flowers at a Public Service Commission meeting last year, talk about how they always have at least one truck on the road so that they can help some of these organizations move people, to grab their things, to help them move to a homeless center, to help them go somewhere that's safer, to get them in the treatment they need to. And so they are already involved. And knowing both of, all three of you were in law enforcement in some form, but much of that is public service and is casework. It's not just going out and pulling a gun or arresting somebody. It is working with people to find out why and fix the problem. And that's part of your job. And I think they're doing a really good job of it here. And I don't, we're not trying to make it any harder. We're trying to do what we have to do to protect everybody. And I don't have, I don't think anybody would, and it's up to the Commission, obviously, but if we wanted to include, as well as the, they must be warned and not move, if you want to include, law enforcement must also contact local providers to see if there's any assistance for this person. I don't have, we could easily craft that language. My only concern was I would not want it to mention specific names because we have a problem with some of the old code here that mentions specific organizations that no longer exist, or they've changed names, and then it's impossible to comply with the code. So if the Commission has an appetite to change that language, that it can absolutely be written into there very easily, that they also must, you know, contact the local providers to look for assistance for these people and that would be fine.
And that's why I mentioned that we have organizations and not any one specific.
Well, can we just simply include the verbiage that a person who violates this code section and after a warning slash referral to service refuses to obey? Something simple, but it clearly defines, because it is a little confusing since it doesn't say a warning, even though I know refusal to obey means that there was some communication. And then just include referral to services, community services, services, whatever you want to say. Because I don't, I would like to just go ahead and get this done and not have to bring back a draft change. So is there some kind of language we can agree upon today? Or can we give clear enough direction as to what we're looking for to have that included?
And it states currently, a person who violates this code section and refuses to obey in order to leave the public property may be subject, if we, if you wanted to include a person who refuses to obey in order to leave and referrals for services?
That's fine.
We could add that as well.
That would be fine. Referral to community services. Is that the language? And referral to services. I don't- Okay, that's good. I think referral to services is good.
I think, may I speak? I think that's a good idea. What form would the referral to services take? I mean, we've heard from a lot of the organizations today, but you also have others, Hibiscus, The Source, Samaritan Center. How would we handle that?
I would suggest leaving it open that way so that it's up to the sheriff's office to determine what the best communication, I wouldn't want to hamstring them as saying, you must contact this person or that person when they would know better what time of day, what they can deal with and what, currently, who has the capacity. Because I know, and I'm sure, I don't want to speak for any of the agencies here, but I'm sure they are all in great communication with each other and know who has services for specific things and who is open. There are times when some are full and they might send you somewhere else. And so I would rather leave that open to allow them to, whatever's best at the time.
Okay. Thank you.
The law enforcement office is, the sheriff's office members, I could speak. As far as my recollection, the deputies are fully informed of what might be available out there and have a tremendous resource. It's called dispatch. And they can do that. There's countless times where deputies have used their phone, their device, or encouraged, as you said, the sheriff has a van out there to assist as well. I just don't want this picture painted that we're criminalizing- I just don't want this picture painted that we're criminalizing the efforts of, as we said, just imagine people lined up in tents or tarps on the curtilage of the entryway here. That's not a quality of life for the citizens, but most certainly, it's not a quality of life for the individuals that are compelled to be in that environment. They deserve better and if the better is available, it just has to be traveled through. And this mechanism where it's a prohibition, it also allows the opportunity to get that individual on the right course as well. It's up to the individual, but it does give the opportunity for traveling the right course to get into something better than living on the street under a tarp.
Just a quick comment about using it just for organizations. The reason why I said homeless continuum of care is because when a referral is made to the coordinated entry system, the coordinated entry system reaches out to all those providers. So it will relieve the sheriff's office of having to call 10 different providers to see who's available. That was the reason why I made that comment, so.
And once again, the service really that you provide or are the CEO of also does a broader scale of housing concerns as well as you're dealing with families that are misplaced, you're dealing with parents with several children that are, were in a home. So you have a broader scale, a wider variety of concerns, and that's just one of the elements that you work with.
And that's the reason why I didn't say Treasure Coast Homeless Services Council. I said homeless continuum of care because we're required by law to maintain that process. It would make it more efficient if it just came directly to the system and we were able to identify the providers in the room who could be available.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Counselor, can you, yes, can you read off the suggested change that was discussed as well?
A person who violates this code and refuses to obey in order to leave and referral to services. To leave and referral to services, the public property may be subject to punishment as provided for an Indian River Code Section 100.05. Is that?
Did that, did that cover the suggestion on services? To.
I just wanted to make it clear that there is a warning and that there is some type of referral. Whom it gets referred to, I trust the experts in the room, I'm not an expert on that process.
And I think the comment of Mr. Hicks is well taken, that the sheriff is a separate constitutional officer and I think we'd want to defer to law enforcement to be able to determine what services. And I would encourage the people in this room that are doing this great work to work with law enforcement on that.
And again, I'm currently in this capacity, but when I was in the other capacity, we had, a lot less than we have today, we had some options available to us to assist people, to get them on the right track. And I think the sheriff's office does a fine job. I'm aware today that it's part of the training mechanism as well. So, and so I appreciate everything they're doing and I believe that's most appropriate to leave it in the hands of those who are making contact, not those that are legislating. Did you have? And did you have any other points, Counselor?
No, thank you, sir.
County Administrator? Is there any other member of the public that wishes to speak regarding this matter? We'll now close the public hearing. Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I think it's important to recognize that Florida Legislature and the governor signed an amendment, the Florida State Statute 125. This ordinance is simply memorializing those facts. And I can assure you that one of the last things that law enforcement wants to do is make an arrest of a homeless person. I can also assure you that more than likely, they would not charge an individual under a county ordinance. Additionally, prior to an arrest of a homeless person, again, I can assure you that all resources will be exhausted prior to that. They're not in the business of arresting our way out of homelessness and I believe the current administration feels the same way. With that, I would move approval as amended.
We have a motion and a second. I'll second that. Any further discussion? We have a motion by Vice Chairman Law, second by myself. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor. Now that we've done that, Counselor, your opportunity for public notice items? And that would be 11B1.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to advise the public, that a public hearing has been scheduled for board consideration for March 25th, which is consideration of a miscellaneous budget amendment 02. And certainly, that information on that budget item will be made available to the public and the board. Thank you.
May the public know what the budget item is? And you said that you will advise? I think that would be important as.
Yeah, there will be a full-blown agenda item in advance for the March 25th meeting that will identify all, and if there's, as it relates to maybe revenue or expenditures, the appropriate accounts, there will be a detailed agenda item as part of that hearing.
Thank you, sir, for the clarification. Now move on to the Department of Natural Resources. And we'll have the Indian River County Climate Vulnerability Assessment update, that's Item 13F1.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Doc.
Kylie Yenchula, Natural Resources Director for the record. So today, we are pleased to have our consultant, Tetra Tech, present to, present to you the draft of the Indian River County Climate Vulnerability Assessment. So this assessment was the result of a collaborative, interdepartmental effort aimed at evaluating the vulnerability of our existing infrastructure to various flooding hazards. It builds upon the recent statewide vulnerability assessment and provides us with the flexibility to focus on and prioritize our local assets. So completing this assessment is an essential step in ensuring our eligibility for potential resilient Florida funding, which can help us to support projects that address flood risks specifically within our community. So leading our consultant team are Georgia Vince and Erin Didi, who are here with us today. So they bring with them extensive experience specifically in conducting these vulnerability analyses and then also in resilience planning. So this presentation represents one of two public meetings required as part of our grant agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, so FDEP. So once we receive any comments that the board wishes to integrate into the draft document, we will bring it back to the board on March 25th in a final version for adoption and then we can submit that final document to DEP. So I'm going to pass it over to our consultant team. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for your time today. My name's Georgia Vince. I'm with Tetra Tech and we were selected to perform the vulnerability assessment. Do you have the PowerPoint presentation? Thank you. So just really quick, we're going to do some very quick team introductions, review the project objectives, some climate resiliency points, the purpose of the project. We'll discuss the exposure and sensitivity analysis that was performed and give you some key takeaways from that analysis. Again, Georgia Vince with Tetra Tech and I have with me today Erin Didi, PA. She is a land planner and an attorney, so has, is a great source, resource for us on the team. Overall, our project objectives were to develop a comprehensive strategy to identify vulnerabilities related to flooding, address those flooding hazards complying with the state legislation, the resilient Florida legislation that Erin will discuss a little bit further. And then the results are, will help you, guide you into future actions and also potentially develop some community partnerships. This vulnerability assessment is going to allow Indian River County to apply for future grant opportunities through the state of Florida programs. And so we, it's one of the really big take-home messages that you will now be eligible for additional funding. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Erin to walk through the resilient Florida statute and components.
Much like your last discussion, Tallahassee sometimes hands us some parameters that we have to operate within. So this is a 100% state-funded grant, but they want these vulnerability assessments to be conducted consistently across local governments. So the types of sea level rise projections and the flood scenarios and all of that is prescribed by statute in terms of what we have to evaluate in these vulnerability assessments. The first thing that they want us to do is create an inventory of your critical assets in order to evaluate what's going to be vulnerable and when. We have to know where your, where your stuff is, where your roads are, your community infrastructure, I'll walk through a little bit of that. And the state of Florida wants us to provide that inventory of critical assets because they are building their own statewide data set of all of the local government's assets to protect them and do some planning long-term. We have to create an exposure analysis, which is basically water on the land, where the water will go under future conditions, 2040, 2070. And we also look at 2100 for some of those long-term infrastructure decisions and we have to create maps. These maps do not account for stormwater operations, heights of seawalls and other things like that. It's strictly a function of the elevation of the land and the elevation of the water. Then we have to identify out of all of the assets that we've looked at, what are the most important ones? What are the critical ones to start planning for? We have to prioritize them and create both a map and a prioritized list to provide back to the state, which tells us what assets we need to look at when because of the timing of the flood risk to them. We have identified what we call flood focus areas, which are the highest concentrations where you have assets and where you have flood risk at the same time. And then obviously, we have to create a deliverable, a report with all of the maps and the lists and all of the, all of the things that the state wants to see. So these are the climate hazards that the state requires us to look at. We look at sea level rise and we are told what projections to use by statute. So it's easier for us because then there's no debate about what those projections are. We have to use them pursuant to state law. We look at high tide flooding, we look at storm surge, we look at rainfall-induced flooding, and then we look at compound flooding, which are some of these scenarios that may have exacerbated impacts upon one another. For instance, in October, you have a one in 100-year rainfall event and you have a king tide scenario at the same time or an offshore storm. Those flooding impacts will exacerbate one another and may create more impacts than what we anticipated from just one mode of flood risk. And so these are the critical assets, again, they're mandated by statute of what we have to collect the information on. Transportation impacts, critical infrastructure, which is your water, wastewater, electric utilities, critical community and emergency facilities, schools, hospitals, and natural, cultural, and historic resources. And one thing that I want to note with this, some of these assets, you don't actually own and control. It would be not your responsibility to adapt them. For instance, you don't own your hospitals in your community, but you may own the roads or flooding infrastructure that supports that particular hospital. So those relationships with those community assets, even though you don't own and maintain them, are important to make sure that there's access to them or those services during these types of events. The resilient Florida legislation, as discussed, it creates certain data requirements. For instance, we have to use NAVD, which is a datum to make sure that there's consistent elevation analysis. We have to look at at least two sea level rise projections and as stated, we have to look at the 2017 NOAA intermediate low and high. When we plan for sea level rise, the science is pretty good in those interim, those shorter years, but the longer term we go out, the less certain it is. So we look at a range of conditions that are prescribed by the state. And then again, they require us to look at 2040 and 2070 and we also look at 2100 for that longer-term projection. And so we have modeled all of this, we have evaluated all of this, and we've created a map series called the Exposure Map Series, which shows the outcomes of these flood scenarios. And so I'll turn it back over to Georgia to walk through the exposure and the sensitivity analysis.
Thank you. So again, just to clarify and make sure everybody's on the same page, the exposure analysis is literally looking at the land elevation and the future projections of rainfall and sea level rise over those land projections, those elevation projections. It does not take into consideration stormwater infrastructure, it's not a model, an H&amp;H model. It's simply looking at the maps where water is going to be on the land in the future. I'll go through some of the maps now. We do have 54 map series that we prepared for the vulnerability assessment, I won't go through all of those, but I'll go through some key maps that you can see how things may look in the future. Again, this is a conservative analysis, so it is using NOAA intermediate high. And so this is NOAA intermediate high, present day, 2040, 2070, and 2100 along the coastline. For rainfall, this is a countywide view of where we're expected to see rain concentrated on the land for 100-year, 24-hour rain event. And it also incorporates along the coast, the sea level rise. We look at days of tidal flooding, so what the expected duration of flooding that will happen along the coastline. And so as you can see, as the areas get more red, we're looking at greater days of inundation. And storm surge, as you can imagine, a category three versus a category five storm, we take those into consideration, the wave run-up, the wind, and how that can affect, affect the shoreline. And as Erin mentioned, we then take all of those conditions and put them together to see the worst-case scenario. And this is a view of the Sebastian River and neighboring communities. And you can see that the, again, the depth of water increases in the low-lying areas. So now that we have identified the areas where the flooding is going to take place, we overlay that with your critical assets. And we look at that inventory that we developed through the, using all the state criteria, and we assess the risks of the flooding against those critical assets. So the purpose of that is to identify flooding focus areas. So we, rather than look at a countywide view, we focus on the areas where you have a concentration of critical assets and we have increased flooding. We take those assets there and we calculate the risk and the vulnerability of those individual assets. And then we apply a ranking system to prioritize those assets so we can identify the highest priorities. So the flooding focus areas are again, subject to either sea level rise, storm surge, rainfall, or a combination of flooding by 2040, 2070, or 2100. It's an area of aggregated critical assets. And we also include a socioeconomic analysis, so we look at low-income neighborhoods and see how that affects where the, where the critical assets are. And that helps prioritize where adaptation response can be directed throughout the community. And these are the 10 flooding focus areas that were identified in cooperation with the team, the steering committee. And I will take you through some of the details of those flooding focus areas. As I mentioned, we prioritize. As I mentioned, we prioritize the assets within each of the flooding focus areas based on timing of those flood impacts. So if it's a near term flooding impact, it'll be ranked higher. If it's being impacted by multiple events, it will be ranked higher. And if it's in a socially vulnerable community, it will be ranked higher. The baseline asset inventory included over 15,000 community owned assets. 1,300 were are owned and maintained by the county. 578 of the critical assets were identified within the 10 flooding focus areas. We did identify 17 assets as regionally significant throughout the county, and these regionally significant assets, again, aren't necessarily owned by the county, but maybe things like the airport, I-95, US-1, major, major infrastructure that is critical to the community. So the 97 critical assets were the highest priority, 172 were medium, and then 309 critical assets weren't prioritized based on our analysis. So in flooding focus area one, we have the Wabaso Causeway Park identified as a high priority. In flooding focus area two, we have Fire Station 15 and the Sebastian Landing Lift Station as a high priority. In flooding focus area three, nothing came through as high, but we do have the Beach Beachland Elementary and Fire Rescue Station Two, as well as a debris management site within this flooding focus area. For number four, we have the Raxton Lift Station and identified as a high priority, as well as Fire Rescue Station Seven within this flooding focus area. Several, several lift stations were identified in flooding focus area five as high priorities. In six, we have Fire Station 10 and Sebastian River Trailhead Park. In seven, one of the assets is a retirement center, a water reclamation facility, and several communication towers as it relates to the airport. Fire Rescue Station Nine is located in flooding focus area eight. There's also some historic homes here and several lift stations, including, and we also have Dale Wimbrow Park and the associated bow ramp. For flooding focus area nine, we identified several lift stations and both as high and medium priority. And then flooding focus area 10 doesn't have any high priorities, but we did identify a debris management site in Indian River shores, community assets that were at risk. So from all of the analysis we did, the key takeaways is that Indian River County will be affected by climate threats and increased vulnerability to flooding in the future. The study that we did is compliant with the Florida statute and allows for eligibility for state funding. Indian River County, as you know, is doing addressing resiliency by doing the following things, identifying the areas most at risk of flooding, prioritizing critical community assets at risk, and setting the foundation for future adaptation planning. So the plan is to increase Indian River County's resiliency through projects, programs, and policies, apply for implementation grants through the Resilient Florida program, and use that add up, use that planning money and that grant money to develop, do additional mitigation planning for the future. And I won't speak for staff, but staff is recommending that the Board of County Commissioners provide comments for incorporation into the final vulnerability assessment. And we look forward to that final VA coming back to the board on March 25th. And that's it for me today.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
On page 616, or six hyphen 16, under historic and cultural assets, I think you might want to add the VR Beach Museum of Art. And as a point of interest, they are in the process of putting together an expansion, quite an extensive expansion program, which will also include actually elevating the museum, the the level to protect it against the kind of flooding events that you're talking about here. So, you know, that's just to be known. I know this is an assessment and not necessarily a plan forward, but I'll just make some comments, and then if it's appropriate, incorporate them, and if not, that's fine. I would like to get a definition of, I don't think it was in here, I read the book, you know, that I read the entire book that we were given, really see a definition of mitigation. And I'd like to know or understand more about that, about mitigation, mitigation, excuse me, especially within the context of this increased, you know, flooding that we know will occur. You know, how can we, how can we mitigate that? Also, I would like to, or hope to engage the public more. There was the one public outreach meeting, Commissioner Arman and I happened to be there, and I think our county administrator attended online, but it wasn't, this is such, I know people are interested in this because as I said earlier in the meeting, many of my complaints that I receive, you know, are about flooding. So I know there's a big interest in this. I'm not sure how you go about, you know, I mean, I can send it out to those people, but, you know, just to attract a larger audience, next time, you know, it's for next time. I know, you know, I know you did it. I guess I'd like to see more too, on what we should require of developers. You had a hint of that here, we know, the living shorelines, and that probably should be not just on ocean or lagoon properties, but also maybe, you know, stormwater ponds. Maybe it's something that we should request that, you know, that every developer do. And that's, you know, that's up to you. Like I said, I'm just commenting on what I read. Several years ago, the Soil and Water Conservation District, which is an elected body, requested that we update the USGS, that's United States Geological Survey Hydrological Report for the county. That was back in April of 2021. And that it's, I know you mentioned in here, getting more information that's specific to the county, and that was a report for the county. So I would encourage you to to speak with them, they're the experts on this. But they had requested it of us, it went through us, they invited County Commission to their meeting, and I believe it was in April of 2021, you know, to inform us that, you know, that it was important to update since the previous one was done in 1988, and it was certainly time to update. But they don't have a budget. So, you know, I know that there'll be funding issues attached to this going forward. They didn't have the budget to do it, and that's the Soil and Water Conservation District. So that's why they were, you know, had attempted at that time to go through us on it. And finally, I think I have, yeah, the new, new land use and land development policies, you know, that came at the very end. And as I said, I know this is not an action plan, but I think that'll really be critical, you know, going forward. And I mean, even today, talking about meritage, and that's going to be in a, what is it called? Special flooding hazard area, you know, that that they're looking to develop. And that sounds pretty important. I mean, that, you know, that special flood hazard area. And, you know, just like throwing an extra bit of dirt on it, I don't think it's going to solve the problem. And I, you know, I wondered to myself, should we be building there at all? So I'm hoping that what will come out of this is the ability to make more informed, better informed decisions about development. That's my, that's my hope for this. Thank you.
Thank you. I can answer your question on mitigation. And mitigation strategies or adaptation strategies are ways to offset or plan for the future. So for a building, for example, that could be floodproofing, dry proofing, moving electrical equipment and important resources for operations to the second floor. It can be elevating an entire building. There's all kinds of different adaptation strategies for different types of assets. Trying to think what else you mentioned, you mentioned. But I did want to address the mitigation. And an adaptation plan would look at those different assets and how they can be retrofitted or relocated in some, some instances to places where there's not as much impact from flooding.
Thank you.
This was a vulnerability study that was directed by the state required.
Yes.
And it's one of the rare exceptions that we had an unfund, we had a funded mandate because we were granted the opportunity to have the study, and it's about vulnerability, not planning. This is not a planning assessment. This was vulnerability, susceptibility, and the ability to be able to apply for funding for any improvements or response in catastrophic events that could be applied. So this is a requirement to have this type of study, a highly technical type of study, correct?
Correct.
Just want to make sure I didn't miss the train.
Yeah, this, this, this vulnerability assessment was 100% funded by Florida DEP, and they also provide implementation grants at a 50% match. And those implementation grants will rank higher in approval if you have completed a vulnerability assessment.
And we really don't, we would not be eligible for many opportunities if we did not have in the absence of this study.
Yes.
It is a requirement.
Yeah, I believe every county within the state of Florida has, is either has completed or is pursuing a vulnerability assessment. And several municipalities, I don't know the number, but a majority of the municipalities also pursue vulnerability assessments.
So it's a precursor, or as they would say in collegiate terms, a prerequisite for any opportunity?
For through the Resilient Florida Program. That's just one, you know, funding source. There's hundreds of funding sources throughout the state and through the federal government.
But this one is key.
Yeah. Specific.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So this is essentially a primer or the precursor to what the logical action that should come next, which I understand some communities have not done, but it should be really adapt, an adaptive adaptation plan that identifies the risks or looks at the risks that you identify, the hazards, and comes up with a plan how to mitigate or, you know, adapt to those specific situations. Is that correct?
That's correct. And those adaptation plans include an implementation schedule so that you can track your progress with implementing the projects that you identify in your adaptation plan.
And that's, well, that's not mandatory in the, in the statute like this was. That's the whole idea, let a community be aware of what risks and hazards they could be presented from a flooding standpoint over a course of time, and then develop the appropriate plan. Is that correct?
Correct. And the state of Florida, Resilient Florida Program also provides funding for adaptation planning.
Yeah.
Did you have something?
No, no.
That was a hard no.
I'm good. I'm feeling vulnerable, but that we have a plan.
Well, they've identified and well engineered.
I got my rubber boots, so I'm good.
Is there anything?
Thank you so much for your time today.
So are you guys just looking for feedback, basically? Do we need a motion? I think Commissioner Moss has given her input. It doesn't sound like anybody else needs that. So is that all you need?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're coming back on?
The 25th or something.
Yes, so we'll bring this back on the February 25th, or March, I know what month it is, the the next March meeting, so March 25th. So we'll bring the final document back. I have the comments from Commissioner Moss, so we can incorporate those in. A lot of them have already been incorporated into the final draft. So we'll just make a couple more edits, submit that, and then get approval, submit that report to the state to meet all of our grant requirements, and then we'll pay our consultant and then request reimbursement from DEP to recoup those dollars. So.
Let us know when you get that check back in the mail and see how fast it turns around.
We'll see in the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, team. Well, the next item is also going to be a rather lengthy one. Would you like to take a brief break while they set it up?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, let's, let's allow them, make sure their presentation is rolling, so we'll take a brief recess.
I don't need them. We have more down here. Back.
We'll now resume the meeting and our staff is all at the ready for item 13 H1, which is the ELAP ranking list of environmental lands acquisition properties for the initial nomination period.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Almost afternoon. Beth Powell, Conservation, Parks Recreation and Conservation Director and Wendy Swindell, Assistant Director for Parks Recreation and Conservation. And Mr. Michael Zito here to our right. Today, we are very excited to share with you the first nomination ranking for the Environmental Land Acquisition Program. The Environmental Land Acquisition Panel has met and the first nomination period has closed. We would like to remind everyone that the nominations are on a continuous cycle, so if anyone would like to nominate parcels, they are able to do so by several different means that we'll cover in the presentation. Quickly, we would like to just give some information to the public for those that may not know. We kind of do this repeat each time because we know there are new community members, new staff, et cetera. The first two bond referendums for Indian River County occurred in 1992 and 2004. These environmental bond referenda allowed for the acquisition of approximately $138 million of properties. The first bond was 26 million and the second bond was for a total of 50 million. Staff used and leveraged grants for many different sources in order to maximize the bond funds that were available and we have purchased just over 2, 2,300 acres that the county manages, 5,622 acres which are managed through leases and management agreements. Some people may be familiar with the St. Sebastian River State Park and the county was instrumental in a very large portion of the Indian River County State Park that is now managed by DEP and the state of Florida. And then 3,761 acres are protected through conservation easements and these conservation easements protect the long-term habitat and habitats and conservation aquifer recharge, et cetera, by prohibiting future development and ensuring preservation of natural resources in perpetuity. The 2022 Environmental Land Bond Referendum was approved through resolution 2022-016. That called, that bond referendum went to the voters, which was approved and that allows for $50 million over the course of 20 years. And this bond referendum was passed again by the voters in 2022. Part of the provision for that was to update the Environmental Lands Program Guide, which is the directing guidance that's board-approved and ELAP approve establishes the ELAP, which tells us how we move through this process to eventually acquire and protect certain environmental, environmentally sensitive lands. So now I think I'll turn it over to Wendy and let her go through the process so that you understand how the Environmental Land Acquisition Panel was created, what it consists of, and a little bit of the timelines to understand the process.
Good morning. We've been through here before to talk to you a little bit about the ELP Guide. The guide was originally developed as part of the first two bond resolutions and one of the first processes, as Beth mentioned, that we had to undertake was updating the guide. That was first brought to the commission to get permission to do that work and then after that time it was taken back to the ELAP. And as Beth mentioned, part of the guide talks about the ELAP itself, the group and what their responsibilities are, how they're put together, who's in the group, their backgrounds and all of that. Just, we're giving you a little bit of refresher, as Beth mentioned, because some of this information may be new to some people, but the ELAP is a nine-member group that was board-approved. Five of the members are from each of the districts for the commissioners and then we have four at-large members with different areas of expertise. And the purpose of putting the board together in this fashion really is to get people that have a lot of varying backgrounds to put input into reviewing these parcels as an advisory group to the commissioners so that once their information is all put together, they can make recommendations. And that's actually what we're here for today is to give you the first recommendation from the ranking. So the first ELAP meeting happened on August 15th and there were two additional meetings in 2023 with the last meeting being the recommendations to modify the Environmental Lands Program Guide. And a good bit of the discussion that was involved with that was actually on the evaluation matrix. The ELAP discussed that at length and made recommendations to modify that to what they felt was a more usable format. So we're going to talk a little bit about the matrix. We just wanted to kind of give you an overview. There are five qualitative considerations and what we talk about with qualitative considerations are really physical characteristics and ecological value. We're looking really for discussion on the resources. Beth and I have put the page numbers for anybody that's wanting to actually find these sections in the guide, which is also incorporated into our GIS hub, which we're also going to touch on a little bit. And then the second half of the matrix is really property acquisition considerations. And really to sum that up, it's kind of getting the most bang for your buck. It's what the best value is for the county to pursue because we're obviously very sensitive to the fact that this is taxpayer money that we're using and we want to do it wisely. So just a quick view of the actual matrix and this is what the ELAP was tasked with filling out. They fill out one of these matrices for each of the nominated parcels and once again on the left-hand side, you can see the qualitative considerations and then on the right-hand side, you see the property acquisition considerations. And about two-thirds of the way down, you see the weighting factors. That was a good bit of the discussion that the ELAP had as well and there were some changes that were made that were ultimately codified by the board in December of 2023 when we bought the, brought the final draft back for consideration. So the weighting factors are basically to give a little bit more emphasis for certain factors, so you'll see the natural communities and corridors or greenways are a little bit higher than things such as vulnerability and purchase need versus alternatives. Just to go into the evaluation factors in a little bit more detail, so the natural communities really focus on the extent and condition of those natural areas. They would look at things like biodiversity and generally what kind of habitat value would that area have. Then you get into the habitat value, which really focuses a lot on the actual species, not just wildlife species, but both plant and animal species. And in other words, the more species you have, it's generally considered to be a higher value. Corridors and greenways, these are looking at connectivity between natural and protected areas. So as we've brought to you before, there's, the Florida Wildlife Corridor is a big consideration in funding right now. Those properties are normally in the western part of the county, but that's not to say that isolated areas do not have a natural value. Most of our conservation areas east of 95 are, a few of them are actually within blueways, but a lot of them really do have a large urban interface, so we have to balance that. And then you have the landscape value, which touches on just what I mentioned. Where is this site in the landscape? What adjacent uses may impact the site? We don't want to be spending a whole bunch of money buying a big piece of land only to find out that they're putting in a big sand mine next door that would change the wetlands on the property and things like that. And recreation and education, we really focus heavily on making sure that the public gets the most enjoyment out of these conservation areas and that obviously includes passive recreation and environmental education, which we do a lot of programming in our current conservation areas. And then the second half of the matrix really talks about property acquisition considerations. This is, as I mentioned, the bang for the buck portion of the matrix. So the first one is just what I said, what is the best value for the dollar? Now, obviously, right now, we're in the formative stages, so we don't necessarily have a dollar amount. That would come, obviously, once we start talking to some of the property owners. Purchase need versus other protection, the way that the ELP guide talks about it, it's that outright purchase should be the last alternative. Are there other reasons why that property could be protected that wouldn't involve complete acquisition? Vulnerability is considered a factor when you're looking at things like what is the threat of development to a particular parcel? If we don't purchase that environmentally sensitive area, will it be converted into some sort of a development? Or in contrast to that, are there regulatory limitations? For example, zoning, are there a lot of wetlands on a site that would require mitigation? Those areas are somewhat protected just based on the existing regulations. We also consider land management constraints. How much is it going to cost the county to restore habitat? Or in contrast to that, is an area in great shape and does not require a lot of land management? So that is one of the evaluation factors. Cooperative acquisition and grant potential, we've been directed by the board to really pursue as much funding as we can to cost share and as Beth mentioned, in the original two grants, the $76 million was actually leveraged into 138 million when the final tally was up for the acquired land, which is a great ratio. And then, excuse me, favorable market conditions. We're looking to talk to willing sellers and compare, you know, one property to another and try and obviously make sure that we're getting the best value. So quickly to go through the nomination process overview, as I mentioned, the ELP was modified by the ELAP in 2023 and it was finally approved in December of that year. Our first cycle began in March 1st of 2024. The cycles are six months in length. Then that nomination period closes, but as Beth mentioned, parcels can be nominated all the time. We're just ranking these properties two times per year. Nominations are open to the public and we had several different mechanisms to accept nominations. We did it by email, by hub, by regular mail and you could literally log into the hub and fill out the application itself. The nominations were reviewed by the ELAP to see if they met the minimum criteria, which is outlined in the guide. We created a dashboard for maximum transparency. That dashboard, if you would like afterwards, if we need to look at anything, we can certainly pull that up, but that provides all of the information that is submitted is put on that dashboard so that it's available to the board, to the ELAP, to staff and to the public. So we want to make sure that everybody is incorporated into this process. The ELAP discussed the nominated parcels and pared down what met the minimum criteria. We engaged environmental consultants to create desktop reports for each of the properties so that the ELAP could review those and have an idea as they rank. Obviously, we don't have the ability at this point to do a lot of ground truthing, but a lot, with the technology that we have now, those desktop reports are actually very useful and informative. All of this information, once again, like I said, is on the hub. We're happy to share how to get there if anybody needs to know that. So 52 nominations were received between March 1st and August 31st. Of those, we had 23 willing seller projects. Some of these nominations, the ELAP elected to cluster into what we're calling projects. These are properties that were adjacent to each other and it just made more sense to consolidate those in terms of how those sites would be looked at from a usable perspective. There were 11 ELAP meetings held in 2024 and the ELAP during that process would review each of the reports and talk about the properties and several times throughout that year, the ELAP had decided that they wanted to rank the fee simple and the easement application separately because the nature of those projects is a bit different, in particular when you get to the second half of the matrix. So in November 24, 2024, staff in the ELAP had an informational meeting and just want to emphasize that all of these meetings were open to the public. At various meetings, we had more or less participation from the public, which was great to have their input. In December 2024, we had another informational meeting, basically to answer, staff was there to answer any questions from either the ELAP or the public to clarify things before the ranking process was formally to begin. And so between that time, the ELAP was to fill out each of those matrix sheets for all of the 23 nominations, keeping in mind that a couple of them were clustered, as I said, and then we have one nomination that was submitted both as an easement as an fee, and also a fee simple nomination. So staff received all those score sheets from the ELAP about a week before the January meeting and went ahead and tabulated all of those and moved to the next. So what I wanted to do really quick is go through each of the fee simple nominations and the easement nominations. We don't, we're not going to take a whole bunch of time. We just wanted to generally show people where these are and just hit on some key highlights.
And one of the things that I would mention really quickly is that toward the end of the presentation, you're going to see the tiered results of the ranking. One of the key components discussed by the ELAP was that in previous bonds, we had categorically numbered. So you had property that ranked number one, number two, number three, and there were some cases where that inhibited the pursuit of potentially a property that had a willing seller that was ready to move because you had other properties that were stacked ahead of it. The ELAP and then through your approval, approved this process by which we will still tabulate all of the scores, but the ELAP would decide on the tiered and that's what we're asking for your approval today, which is consistent with staff's recommendation is the ELAP recommendation. This tiered process allows for us to pursue properties within whichever tier you approve today so that we're not holding one property up over another. And the other thing that I would mention is that with the exception of the Flores Groves property, all of these properties are eligible for consideration and for pursuing for acquisition. However, in order for staff to be able to efficiently move toward and focus on certain properties, those that rank the highest, the tiers would be what we're recommending that you approve for us to move forward with first. We also have new nominations that will be coming in and we'll be folding those into this, so it's a kind of a moving target and could be changed at any time by the board's direction or by recommendation by the ELAP.
Yeah, and I'm glad Beth clarified that. I also should clarify that the reason that we have the 23 that you're going to see today I also should clarify that the reason that we have the twenty-three that you're going to see today is because these are just the willing seller properties. It's not that those other ones that are on the list have gone away, they're still there. We just have not been able to contact those owners or they have not expressed an interest at this point in being included into the process. But we don't remove any of the projects from consideration unless the owner sends us, you know, stipulates, please take my property off of this list. So the first one we wanted to quickly show you, this is Sixty-Sixth Avenue. This is a forty-eight-and-a-half acre parcel. As you can see, it is all pasture. It was nominated on behalf of the owner. The current zoning is agricultural one. And you can see in the dash line at the bottom, that is the Saint Lucie County border. So the west side would be Sixty-Sixth Avenue, and the south there would be the Saint Lucie County line. Atlantic Boulevard, if you look to the south of the green block, that is IRSC. That is obviously, I'm sorry, to the north. And you can see where State Road sixty is. This is an eleven-point-three-acre parcel that actually is nominated by the landowner. The zoning is A-one and AG-one. And a good bit of this is forested areas. I believe there are some buildings on this site. Beachside Lane Property, you can see the Oyster Bar Marsh Conservation Area is adjacent to this. This is a six-point-three-acre parcel. It was nominated by the landowner. The current zoning is single-family residential. It is located in the southeastern Indian River County, as I mentioned. And you can see the little area on the extreme east area that sticks out. That would be where the home site could potentially occur. Bent Pine was brought to us, this piece of their vacant land. It's ninety-three-point-seven acres. It is adjacent to the golf course. The, it is currently zoned RM four, multiple family. And it was nominated by Charles Fountain, who is on their Board of Governors. Foster Road Property is in the city of Sebastian. You can see County Road five-twelve to the southeast of the site and US one. And the north Sebastian Conservation Area would be to the northwest. This is a fifteen-point-six-eight acre parcel nominated by the adjacent landowner. And the current zoning is residential, multifamily, medium density. And it, once again, like I said, it is located in the city of Sebastian. Hale Groves, this is one that we had gotten feedback from the ELAP that it should be ranked as a, we're calling it a project instead of a parcel because this forty-two-acre nomination is actually five separate properties with four owners. The two Hale Grove storefront and the Hale Grove property. And then we have two Durant's Place and Ninety-third Lane is on the riverside of that. We were not able to make contact. There was a small piece to the extreme northwest of the site on US one, so that was not included. And all five parcels are willing sellers. Jungle Trail Fisher Property is obviously is on Jungle Trail. The little red arrow is circling that. That's a three-and-a-half acre parcel. The owner is currently building a home in the portion of the site closer to Jungle Trail. You can see on the aerial that it is adjacent to Captain Forester, which is one of the conservation areas that the county manages. Jungle Trail Island Club Manor is to the south of that previous site. It is a nineteen-point-three-six acre site. It is reclassified recently from A-one to RS-three. The owner does indicate that while they're interested in participating in this process, that they are planning on moving forward with development at some point. And as with the previous nomination, this is adjacent to Captain Forester, which we manage. Canter Farms West is out with all of the easements, which are in the western part of the county. This is the nomination that wanted to be considered for both a fee simple purchase as well as a conservation easement. It's two hundred and twenty-eight acres in size. It was nominated by an agent on the owner's behalf. It is south of Highway sixty. It is adjacent to the Paget Easement and south of the Covey Ranch nomination. And you can see the county boundary for Okeechobee County is just to the south. Kelly Road is a hundred and ninety-four-point-four acre parcel that actually has nine subparcels. This is located south of Oslo Road, sort of southwest of where the intergenerational center is. The owner did not nominate this project. This has been approved several times for plan development. It is currently zoned as L-two. And we just highlighted that the one owner may reduce timeframes even though there are nine parcels. Louisiana Avenue, as you can see on the map, is adjacent to North Sebastian Conservation Area. This is a four-point-six-five acre site that includes multiple parcels, but they're all under common ownership. It is, it was nominated by the owner. It is only commercial, and it is adjacent to the FEC Railroad in the Bright Line. Osprey Estates is adjacent to the Forty-Fifth, the Gifford Dock. You can see that just to the north side of the property. And then there is conservation land to the south. This is a twelve-point-seven acre parcel. It was part of a mosquito impoundment that is no longer in the REM management program. So the majority of this site is mangroves. Sebastian Riverview Property is, as you can see, right before you leave the county and head into Brevard County on US one. This is a two-point-one-five acre parcel that is abutting the Indian River Lagoon. It was nominated by a resident on behalf of the owner. And the current zoning is limited, commercial district, future zoning. The reason that we keep mentioning the zoning is, as I mentioned on the matrix, that is one of the considerations is the threat to development, just in case you were wondering. Tara Estates is an eight-point-seven-nine acre parcel. This is to the north of County Road five-ten, and this is part of a conglomeration of parcels that are adjacent to the South Pong Slough. This was nominated by the landowner, Martin C. Tara, and the current zoning is RS-ten. Wabaso Island Property is three-point-four acres. It is across from the ELC. You can see where the Causeway is located. This was nominated by a member of the community. And the potential zoning here is RS-one, which is a single-family home. Winter Beach Seventy-third Street Property is approximately thirty-six acres. It is one owner, but it was not owner, it was not nominated by the owner. The current zoning is RS-three. It is located at the east end of Sixty-Ninth Street, and the owner has, obviously, is a willing seller. So now we're going to move quickly into the conservation easements that were nominated. As you can see here, we do have seven easements. One of the things that Beth and I wanted to clarify, she brought it up earlier, is that the Flares Grove easement was considered. It did meet the minimum criteria, but once it got to the point of ranking, we'll discuss that in a minute. It was eliminated from future consideration just because the feeling from the ELAP was it just didn't meet the intent of this resolution. Not that it wasn't a valuable property, but it just wasn't meeting the intent of this particular process that the county's going through. So the first easement to discuss is the Blackwater Creek Flatwoods. You can see that it is north of State Road sixty. It's one thousand four hundred and seventy acres owned by Todd Fennell, and it was nominated by a local resident. There is an active hunting and fishing lodge and ranch on site. Blue Cypress Flatwoods is approximately two hundred and ninety-seven acres owned by Raymond Darling, and it was nominated by a local resident. And once again, it is north of Highway sixty and just to the southwest of Blue Cypress Lake. Covey Ranch is south of State Road sixty. That is an approximately three hundred and ninety acre, ninety acre parcel. It was nominated by an agent on the owner's behalf and is adjacent to the current Paget easement that the county has. Fort Drum, one-fifty Ranch is approximately one hundred and forty-eight-point-six acres. This was nominated by an agent on the owner's behalf. As you can see, it is south of State Road sixty, and it is adjacent to Paget Easement and north of the Covey Ranch nomination. Canter Farms West, as I mentioned earlier, was nominated both as a fee simple acquisition as well as a conservation easement. This is two hundred and twenty-eight acres in size. It was nominated by an agent on the owner's behalf. And as I mentioned prior, it's adjacent to the Okeechobee County boundary on the south side. Paget Branch Easement Two is approximately one thousand ninety-four acres. It was nominated by the owner, Lance Paget. The northern boundary is Highway sixty. Southern boundary is Okeechobee, and you can see it's adjacent to existing conservation. This is the parcel that I just mentioned. This is the Flares Grove, twenty-nine-point-six-nine acres. It was nominated by the owner, Mr. Bob Adair. He represents the Florida Research Center for Agricultural Sustainability. The property is actively utilized to conduct research on production of food and fiber crops. So the the feedback from the owner was that that would be continuing. It would not, they would not want to change their process that they currently have underway. So the ranking meeting summary, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, we had that public information meeting and took questions from the public and from the ELAP prior to the ranking process beginning. The ranking meeting summary in January twenty-tw- twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five was the ranking meeting. The ELAP did have quorum for that meeting. Staff presented the summary, which you're going to see in just a minute, which is the table that shows the ranking and also the tiering of the properties. There was a general discussion from the ELAP members on their rankings during the meeting and general discussion about scores in comparison with the summary table. But none of the members elected to change their scores or change the ranked list. So the discussion then moved into actually tiering the properties. As Beth mentioned, the goal of the tiering was to allow for staff to pursue the tier-one properties concurrently. So one property wouldn't necessarily hold up the negotiations with any other particular property. All of the properties remain viable, and the thought is that once the tier-one list is exhausted, then we move into tier-two and then tier-three. So a motion was put forth to remove the Flares Grove, as I mentioned, because it just didn't meet the intent of this current resolution. And the ELAP did approve a motion to recommend that the board adopt the ranked and tiered list of projects and direct staff to pursue discussion with the landowners of tier-one properties. So this is the nomination ranking. You can see the green are the tier-one properties. Wanted to mention that the ELAP had also decided, as they rank these projects, not to average their scores. They did a cumulative score. So six thousand two hundred and eighty-five represents all nine ELAP members' scores. And so that, as you can see, they go from top to bottom in terms of the scoring. And then tier-two would be in the blue and tier-three would be in the red. The other item that Beth mentioned was the tiering was also looked at in terms of what is a manageable group of properties for staff to pursue at any one time. Not to say that if we get in touch with the tier-one properties and it turns out that some of those owners and their idea of their value is different from what the county is, then we just move into tier-two once those opportunities are exhausted. So the breaking of the list, there were some, what the ELAP perceived to be natural breaks as to what was a manageable group of projects and what made sense from a resource protection. And that's the fee simple nominations. And then we'll show you the same process for the easement nominations. So you can see the easements, the six that remained were split between tier-one and tier-two with, once again, the Canter Farms being in tier-two for an easement, but tier-one for the fee simple. So that was the finding of the ELAP. And then we move into the BCC recommendation. We are respectfully requesting that the Board of County Commissioners approve the attached ELAP final ranking and tiered list of nominations. And we're further requesting that the board authorize staff to pursue tier-one ranked properties for acquisition consistent with the environmental lands acquisition panel's recommendation, including the authority to make conditional offers of purchase and sale subject to approval by the Board of County Commissioners in accordance with Florida Statute, section one-twenty-five-point-three-five-five. Thank you. So we're here to answer questions and...
Well, I just, I just want to open it up with, I'm sure there are questions. I don't know how they can't be questioned. This was, this took the better part of that long period of time in which we've had possession of the book. But I want to, I want to thank ELAP. I want to thank the team. They come from all walks, and they were given a lot of opportunity, suggestions, nominations. You all had to travel the course with all this information and the assessment process to get it here today so you can continue your process. It's rather complicated because I believe, well, there's two of us that have had a lot of, in in our prior careers, we've had the opportunities to look for overdue campers, kayakers, and and go into some of these lands, which are absolutely breathtaking. Some are not. They're, they're worth preserving, worth looking into. But some of these items, and obviously, to one that ranks the highest, I think that's an all-time record. That's because it is absolutely a wonderful experience just to be there. And with that, I only hope that the assessment, the the process involved some independent visits other than informationals because, again, personally, I I had to be at some of these sites for a whole different reason. But when you're there, it's actually, one of the sites was the first time I saw a panther. And I I think that some of the species of wildlife that you were encountering, I don't even think Marlin Perkins got a chance to see yet. It is absolutely breathtaking, the environment, and this is a mission well-served. But I I trust that my colleagues have some, I just want to recognize because I trust my colleagues may have some questions. And then I also will be opening up to the public for further input before we move forward. Thank you.
I want to thank you also. I attended, I guess, I guess it was two of the meetings, the long meeting. Was that the one in November? I was, I stayed for two hours, and I think it went, I don't know whether it go five or six hours. It was literally into the night. That was an incredible amount of work. It was, I'm glad I had the opportunity to sit there. And then the second meeting was interesting to me. I don't know if that was the very next one or the one after that. But that was the one where everybody in the room, before there was much discussion, just agreed. Was that, was that the the ranking meeting?
That was likely the January meeting, I'm guessing.
And we, was it, did that have to do with the ranking? Everybody, everybody agreed. It was, it was interesting to watch. I mean, I didn't stay that long for that one. I feel, oh, everybody agrees, so that's done. But it was fascinating to watch the process, and I understand the amount of work that went into it. I had a couple of questions because I was, it was a lot of reading. I reviewed the program guide, just to refresh my memory on it. And just out of curiosity, I was looking at, it's Appendix D, Chapter Eight, which is from the conservation element. It's objective five on wetlands. It's only one sentence, so I'll read it. I'm just curious where we stand, if you know. Through two thousand and twenty, there will be no net loss of the natural functions and values of wetlands or deep-water habitats in Indian River County. Like, are we, you know, are we keeping track of that? Do we know where we stand in that regard?
I I don't believe in particular that our department is, but I do recognize that we do have, in our planning group, we do have our group that follows wetland permitting in the county, and they work very closely with the Water Management District, who does keep a statewide inventory on net loss of wetlands. Now, whether or not our our county is doing it in that level of detail, I don't know at this point, but we could certainly find that out for you.
I was just wondering, because in terms of determining the tiers, and I know there were, there appear to be many variables, and you can handle only so much work. But I, just now, as you were going through them, I chose, you know, Riverside, I'm sorry, Beachside Lane Property and Sebastian Riverview Property. So those are both, I think, you know, waterfront. So I'm wondering, just, you know, in general, are pieces of property that are near existing bodies of water, are they, you know, considered to be more crucial, less crucial? And it would seem to hinge on whether or not we've met the requirements of some of these objectives. You know, like no, no net loss of the natural functions and values of wetlands. I mean, it would seem, it would seem to me, it would be good to know that. I mean, it would seem, it would seem to me, it would be good to know that and have that, you know, influence some of the decision-making.
One of the things that was in the resolution was referencing protection of the Indian River Lagoon. So obviously, any of those properties that are adjacent to the lagoon, both upland and wetland, have that ecological value. The way that the matrix is laid out, the vulnerability for those sites would get a lower score because obviously if they are largely wetland, it would be, it's not impossible to develop wetlands, but you obviously do have hoops that you have to jump through. But in contrast to that, then on the other portion of the matrix, it would rate higher from a habitat point of view because they are, for the most part, intact. So it's a, a balance that the matrix tries to recognize. And what the process would be, that as we go through all of this, and we will come back to the board, once we talk to owners, with what owners are actually truly meeting us in terms of a potential acquisition, to talk about more in-depth each of these properties. Because at that point, we'll have the ability to get on the properties, look at them, evaluate. It's very hard from a desktop in, level. As a biologist, I can look at that information and tell you what I believe to be there, but to confirm that, and also things like protected species. You can't really see that unless you're on the site where you actually observe things or observe a habitat that would indicate that that would be there. So I'm probably not answering your question thoroughly, but in terms of wetlands, they're very well-regulated in Florida, second probably only to California and the nation in terms of how closely we regulate our wetlands. And in terms of net loss and functional value, I think the county does a very good job of making sure, through our planning process, that we're conserving what we can through our ordinances and regulations. Obviously, you can't go much beyond what is codified as a regulation.
I'm going back to the tiers for a minute. Do you have any idea what the timeline will be? Because I, I guess, if I understood it correctly, you're going to address tier-one to the exclusion of tier-two for, for now. Is that, is that correct? Do I understand that?
It prioritizes the ability for staff to focus on the tier-one properties because that's what we feel and the ELAP felt like was the most important for us to focus on, our attention on. A lot of that hinges on whether or not there are truly willing sellers for the appraised value of the property. When it comes to the easements, what are they willing to negotiate in the easements? Are they willing to meet the county where we want and need to be with regard to the preservation, protection, and long-term management of those properties? We may find that we have different interests or different ideas of what a conservation easement entails. And for the, the simple properties, we may find that there are things that prohibit us from being able to purchase those properties, you know, once you get into that. But until, and again, I think, one of the things that is important to remember, there are not winners and losers in this process. With the exception of the Flares Groves, all of these properties are eligible for acquisition through this program based on the cursory review. But we do have to be able to take the different properties and, and bite off what we can chew during this first round. And with the second nomination period, period having just closed, this, this list will be fairly dynamic. And I think that's what we saw during the last two bond referendum also, was that the list becomes very fluid and very dynamic because you start to enter into negotiations, you start to talk to the landowners, you start to find out that maybe properties have restrictions that make it, make the purchase more complicated than initially we knew. But all of this just lays out a process by which we can prioritize. And so having these three groups allows us to simultaneously pursue the tier-one. We may come back in, who knows, forty-five days and say, look, more than a third of the properties are really not eligible for purchase. And then we could adjust or amend our recommendation and the ELAP can adjust their recommendation to go ahead and pursue tier-two.
I see. Okay, so there, there's no real timeline in mind then. It could go quickly, it could stretch out. Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, I would tell you that this was an experience. It was a great experience. It was one of the most difficult things, I think, for every member, as educated as some of our members were. And I would give you each credit for each picking good members on this board. And the ones we did at large were good. They were all very educated, very to the point, asked great questions of staff, and, and worked very well. But I think if you ask any of them, even probably some of our, our ones that have, that have done this before, such as I, we have one member that, that's in the business of purchasing lands for an insurance company, he would tell you it was very difficult to do this. But in the end, they came out on, on the, on the right side, I believe, of, of where they did. I even did my personal rankings, that were just for my own, that, that I talked to Wendy about or something, just compared them to what we had because I was just there as the liaison. So mine wasn't there. And, and, and I was pretty close in my rankings of what they did. There were some that were, that were different, you know, that higher up than middle, maybe higher up at the top or lower. But, but it was definitely a, a, a task that was very, even, I would say, even dawning at times. I think they would agree, but they've got all the hard work to do. And as you know, that is the dynamic duo right there. If it can't, if it, if it can't happen, you know, if it can't be done, it can't happen. They have done the, 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 the yeoman's part of this with regards to how much work has been done, and our work is still not over. Again, we're asking you today to look at, and, and, you know, give them permission based on the rankings to start finding more out about the property, which is one of the key components, which is the financial component of it. You know, can we make a deal? Can we buy it at the right price? Are we getting the best bang for our buck? And can we leverage it with additional funds if those funds are available out there, the state, federal, or whatever, land trust, or whatever funding may be? So the job is still very in its infant stages of this. And I think for, over this next few months or so, over there, we're at least within two thousand and twenty-five, I think we have a lot of work ahead of us. And I would remind you all that we're all looking at, you know, spending up to fifty million dollars of the taxpayers' money. Hopefully, again, we can leverage that money to seventy-six more million or whatever, the, what y'all did before, you know, over the hundred-million range possibly. I think that's the key. But I, I just wanted to say that, that as you're, as the representative of this board, to this, to this group, it was my honor to do it. And the work is still not finished yet. There's a long way ahead of us. But you can be proud of, of your nominees that you placed on the committee and the, and the at-large members of, of the, of the great job that they did. Again, it wasn't an easy job and, and we'll see where we go with reference to any other properties that have been nominated in the future and move up the narrow. But, but again, you know, Beth, Wendy and their staff, they, they, and I would say even, I forgot, we don't want to forget the GIS folks that did a, that did a tremendous amount of work on this to make that hub a reality and where it is. And the consultant, obviously we pay them, but they, they, when you look at your information in your book that you compiled, it's very, it's, it's very good and very to the point as, as to what you need to see. But it, it's, it's working well right now. I'm very happy to report to you all that this has worked well and that we're moving forward to this. I look forward to see what we nominate or what we look to purchase in the next, you know, within this next year, within the next months. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm done, but I, thank you. Mr. Chairman, you know, I'm just compelled to look at one of the statements you made that was, it was complimentary to this board on who we select on the committee. It's their work. But more importantly, I'm grateful that none of them were on the endangered species list. You see, you know, some of the discussion on committees where we said that people have been there too long, some of those individuals have been there quite some time. And I'm grateful that they were there because I think they did an awesome job in selection.
They did.
And just imagine for a moment if they were plucked out by the endangered species list of, they've been there, appointed just too long, that we might not have had such a positive, favorable outcome, utilizing their expertise, their knowledge, their skills, their abilities, and their willingness to explore and be open-minded as to what would they were confronted with. And to absorb every opportunity. I have to say, I want to thank them for their longstanding institutional knowledge because I think it made a difference here. It brought it to the heart. That's what I wanted to just touch base with. Coming up with a different item soon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I also echo what Commissioner Irman said. I do want to remind folks that not only did Commissioner Irman volunteer, dove into this, but that was also a time when he was the chair. So he has a lot of responsibility on his hands at the time. And probably the most knowledgeable of every square mile of this county would be Commissioner Irman, so I appreciate that. Couple that with the experience that Beth and Wendy have from prior ELAP committees, which is huge. And double down on the amount of meetings that they had.
Yes.
And, you know, it's refreshing to see parcels throughout the county, not one particular region of the county. And I think we're well-represented in that. And of course, it dovetails right into our environmentally sensitive discussion that we had earlier. I thank you for that.
Anything else? Mr. Adams from...
No, I think everybody's covered it. I appreciate it. I appreciate my very detailed notebook. And I'm happy to see this moving forward.
Thank you. Well, this time, if there's nothing further from the board, we can open up a public hearing. Two microphones, please say your name for the record. That's for Madam Claire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. George Glenn Jr., Office 2165, Fifteenth Avenue, Bureau Beach, Florida. Just wanted to provide a couple of comments. I've been very interested and have followed the environmental programs of the county since I was a teenager. I grew up in Indian River County. And when I came back to the county after I graduated undergrad, I was on the code enforcement board as a young twenty-two-year-old and even had an opportunity here to work at the county as a young legal attorney. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all. This is a program that's near and dear to my heart. I'm glad that it's, it received the care that I think it deserves. Just a couple of comments. I absolutely believe that if this program's going to be successful, it means we obtain significant grant matching funds, whether that's from the state of Florida, the federal government, a water management district, a private local entity that's willing to put up money. That's absolutely important. And I don't know until you get into the process. Historically, the state of Florida had a program called Florida Communities Trust. I always, I'll just refer to it as FCT. FCT's been around since the nineties. It was funded historically at between sixty and sixty-six million dollars a year back when the county was running their ninety-two and oh-four bond programs. How I remember it, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, the Department of Community Affairs administered the program. You were given certain level of points if you had things in your comp plan, and which the county did. And so the county always felt very confident that they could go out, purchase a piece of property, and receive a substantial matching grant from the FCT program. And I think most often, it did actually receive that grant. That program is now funded at a level that's in the ten to fifteen-million-dollar range. So it's, it's less than a quarter than what it had received historically. And there is stiff competition. There's, I think, at last count, almost twenty-two counties in Florida that now have a conservation program to protect land. And so whereas before, you know, I believed that the county sort of had a plan of, we buy the property, we submit it after the fact, we get a reimbursement grant. I don't think that's going to work anymore. I think you've got to be much more proactive. Before you make the purchase, I think you want to know, to the greatest extent that you can, are we going to get matching funds either from FCT, the Wildlife Corps, or Florida Forever, a water management district? So I think it's important to have that conversation before it's brought to the board, before the board authorizes its purchase, is to be more proactive than reactive when it comes to looking for that matching grant. The sellers that are willing to potentially make a deal, I mean, that's sort of hard because you don't know until you get to the negotiation process and it's at the very end. I would say one thing, you know, if I had to have one criticism of the oh-four bond, it seemed to me that the county would get two appraisals and the commissioners would almost take a sort of, oh, it would be disrespectful if we asked the landowner to, you know, reduce the offer price by ten percent or something. And I, I would, I would hope that maybe you all would take a different approach, that you would look at the appraisal as a tool, but realize, you know, it shouldn't be the end-all, be-all. You know, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with looking at, asking, does the appraisal make sense? And if, even if it does, you know, is it an opportunity to get some type of discount from the property owner if they're willing to move forward with its conservation? I look at the properties on the list and there's some really incredible, amazing properties. The one you mentioned as number one is, yeah, that's, I know you told me the story of visiting the property right next door and, and, and it is beautiful and it should probably be number one. And I know for a while, I believed that, that property was actually on the Florida DEP list. And DEP has some money there potentially for, so hopefully that money still might be there. So there's a lot of things that I think have to happen on the front end rather than the back end this time. But, you know, again, I would like to see a process where when they bring it forward, it's not necessarily, hey, we got two appraisals, they've agreed to, you know, the average of appraisal or whatever, so just accept it and sign off on it. I'm hoping you all will take a little bit more like, ah, does the appraisal make sense? Do we want to ask, you know, for some type of, maybe potentially, discount on the property? I love the questions on the wetlands. I really love the response that your staff gave. I think that's really accurate. There's significant protection for wetlands. I, my interpretation, no net loss is not that you can't develop on a wetland, it's that you have to mitigate by buying credits in a mitigation bank. So, but even with that, I think I gave an example in a letter that I submitted to the county where there was a, the Anson, what I call the Anson thirty-five-hundred. I don't know if you all are familiar with that property. It sits on the southwest corner of ninety-five and five-twelve. And if you were to ever pull up the, the St. John's River Water Management District permit for that property, they required, I mean, if you look at it, it's, the wetlands have been set aside. The, the district wasn't going to allow them to develop the wetlands on that property, so the development's limited to the uplands area. So I know you have quite a few properties on this list that is, that are mostly wetlands. Ideally, when you get the appraisals, the appraisals are going to reflect that, but I don't think that's always the case. So that's what I would just also say is that i- if something's probably not going to have a high chance of development, hopefully that's reflected in the appraisals. And if it's not, hopefully that's reflected in how you choose to move forward, not saying that you shouldn't move forward, but maybe it's, you know, we want to make sure we're not overpaying for something that would already be protected if it were ever to go through a development process. You know, I, I agree with what Commissioner Irman said. He did his own rankings of the properties and he came out with a little different. I did the same thing. I came out with a, not, it, it, mostly the same, but some differences. I will say this, I've always, you know, tried to study up on conservation easements. I think they're best utilized when you're broadening out an existing corridor. So you have some easements on this. In fact, most of the easements, I believe, one, two, three, four of the easements are adjacent to the Paget branches where other existing easements. I think, to me, that's more valuable than when you have sort of random properties that are going to be subject to an easement, especially if there's a property that has a huge slew that goes through it. Because I just don't see any scenario where St. John's is ever going to say, oh, yeah, you know, we'll, we'll let you develop that slew. It's, and it's a beautiful property and those, all the properties for easement base, I think, are really fine. And at one point, I think, the properties that were suggested for conservation north of sixty was a, was a corridor, and I think some of those properties got pulled off. And so what was left, I think, were sort of just two disconnected properties. But they're all fantastic, they're all worthy of protection. But again, as you're going through this process, if, you know, be more proactive than reactive, ask your staff to be proactive on where the grants are going to come from before you make the decision purchase, not after. And, and again, when you get these appraisals in, you know, it's a tool, you know, this is legislative, it's not like it's a piece of property that you have to buy for a road and you don't have a lot of options. You know, just, just ask if it makes sense and, and get the best deal you can for the taxpayer because this will be successful if we can get, I think you said, if we get seventy, if we get another twenty-six, thirty million dollars in matching grants so that we spend eighty million dollars, or we get eighty million... spend $80 million, or we get $80 million worth of property, I think this would be a really successful bond. So, thank you.
Counselor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
You make some very valuable points. And you were around for the last go-around, and I want you to know that I appreciate your passion in this arena. I just want to say that you've dealt with these two, okay?
I've dealt with all of them, I think.
You got, well, but today, this board will be taking action on moving forward for the opportunity to negotiate, negotiate. And I think that's the key word here. I think in years past, in the last go-around, you're absolutely right. There's, you have 20 million, and here's, okay, these five fit, not this team, okay? There will be discussion. And also, with the, as far as the property rights arena, the second cut, you know, there's also agreements as far as opportunities that I'm sure will come out as far as community contact, community availability, visitation, or any future use other than building homes. There is some talk in that arena as well. So, I think I want to entrust the decision-making to get where we're at, because again, I admitted, I've been to quite a few of these properties for other reasons, but not all of them. But after talking with staff, as we all did, and having to deal with, it's definitely a high-value item. We'd have to report that to the Ethics Commission, if there was a dollar amount placed to it. There is a lot of background and dedicated information here that I did take the time to look at. I would say that the, my ranking would be the same as you said, and Commissioner Irman, who had the opportunity to be in the room at all times. My ranking would be extremely close to this. I don't know how I would, after the deriate, when we're going into the, into the, into, from the green to the blue to the pink, that would have been a difficult one, to say, we may not get there. That may be a pathway not traveled. But I'm very excited about all of the first opportunities. But I appreciate your input, too. It's always great to get additional funding at all costs, because I don't know when we're going to be able to ask the citizens, again, we're ready to do another bond. This one was a tough one. It came a time when there was other economic challenges. As passionate I am about the properties, I wasn't too keen on committing the bond at first. But I'm glad we did.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. And, you know, it's a tough time. Who knew the impact that COVID would cause from everything coming to a standstill, to all of a sudden, Florida is now the, you know, most moved to state in the country. And so, I thank you for your leadership. And I think for all the, all the board members who voted to move the bond forward as well, again, I think we can do some really good things. We did some good things with '04. We did a lot of great things with '92. And so, let's, hopefully, this is going to be remembered as being a fantastic program that accomplished a lot.
Thank you for your general overview as well.
Thank you so much, you all. Thank you.
Is there anyone? There's two microphones. Cue up. Do I draw one out? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mark Baker, Rick Baker Realty. I'm an agent for one of the properties in Tier One. I have a client that asked me a few questions that I can't answer. What do we do now? What's the process? I'd like, you know, to be able to call him up this afternoon and let him know, here's what we're going to do, and here's Act One, Act Two, Act Three. And if you could address that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
That is an administrative question. Today, we will be approving or giving staff the green light, the go-ahead, to go with Tier One. At that point, they will begin the process and notifying, and it is going to be, it's not a one-day task. So, I mean, if they want to articulate of their expectations, but I believe if you're in Tier One, and this has any positive impact today, that you'll be hearing real soon.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Having given fair and equal opportunity to speak, we'll now close the public hearing. Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, I'd like to make the motion as follows with this, that the Board of County Commissioners approve the attached ELAP final ranking and tiered list of nominations, and that requests, and the board further requests for staff to pursue the Tier One-ranked properties for acquisition consistent with the Environmental Land's Acquisition Panel recommendation, including the authority to make conditional offers of purchase and sales subject to the approval by the Board of County Commissioners in accordance with Florida Statute 125.355. And then that, I will also say for staff to do what is, it's not part of the motion, but I would also like staff to make sure that, as I guess George put it very well, to use the, to find out what money is around there, what's available to make these purchases, whatever the purchases may be, to make them more affordable, more enticing, and get the better bang for our buck.
Second. The motion part. The rest as well, too.
The rest is just, very good recommendations.
Sure that we're out there getting the best. I thank George, because it sure is. But knowing these two, they'll do that. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Irman, second by myself. Do we have any further discussion?
Want a clarification? Staff is very adept at knowing the strength of the applications, but they will not know the results of the applications at the time that we're negotiating the price for purchase and sale. So, I trust they can evaluate potential strength of the cost-sharing opportunities, but they will not know.
Right.
Just want to be clear that that's not going to be a, these two know.
They know the strength. They do. They're very good at knowing potential outcome, but it's an application. So, just want to be clear.
And assessment, evaluation, negotiation. Thank you. See no further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. You know what? We could, we could take a five-minute break to go into the next one. I'm sorry.
Just want to make sure the hamatch is set up. It's good. No, no, we're not doing that first. No, no, we're doing, we're doing next item. Meeting will now be called back to order. Crowd has thinned out quite a bit. But very important mission has to be made, and that's the county attorneys matters. And that's item fourteen A, which is the 2025 committee vacancies and appointments. And we have a staff report, and we have counselor. And we can begin the process. I just wanted to ask or make a statement. During the last go around, we talked about a lot of things, but no votes were taken place as far as, if I stand corrected, as far as the at-large positions, we held them aside. Is that correct?
No, you did make some appointments, but there were a couple at-large positions that you held aside.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Right. Yeah, there are some, the ones that are in front of you today are at-large.
We held aside.
Except for, I think, maybe a.
And there were statements made about longevity as far as time in service for the great volunteers that are committed to the committees. But we did not give staff any directive on, on that, correct? As far as eliminating culling the herd?
We, we brought back a couple of them to you, but we didn't, you didn't take any action or give us direction.
Not take any action. That's what we're doing today.
Right, on these, on these appointments. That's correct.
And as far as all the appointments, we have ample appointments with the exception of one because we have no applicants in that arena. Correct?
Yes, we've identified where you have no applicants.
Okay, but I just want to shout out again to Doc for doing a tremendous amount of work and getting this all together. His has not been easy, but all the cats are herded now as best we can make them. So we turn it over to counselor.
Okay, thank you. So yes, the board has reappointed some incumbent committee members, but left other at-large positions to come back to you today. And I'm gonna kind of go through the pending applicants to these committee vacancies. The first one is your Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Now, there's one vacancy on that committee. We, and it's a citizen who is actively engaged as an advocate for low-income persons in connection with affordable housing. And Christina really waded through a number of applicants that you had to find the ones who submitted resumes indicating an interest and a commitment to advocating for low-income persons. So you have these two candidates that have applied for that particular slot. Wendy McDaniel Vocell and Desiree Samuel Scholz.
Are we asked, are you gonna ask us at this point, like, if we want to recommend somebody? Now's the time to hash it out?
That's what I thought. We could go committee by committee and.
We need to do them individually because there are some constraints. I see some notes here that are included. That as far as for Wendy McDaniel Vocell, she is currently a CSAC Grants Subcommittee member. And I, I understand, that's why I brought up the precursor to this, was we had a general discussion about being on two committees or more, and that we wanted to, that was one of the commissioners had said, we would like to drive for having individuals on a committee, and that the committee, they should not be serving another committee. I believe that was the intent of the process. In addition, there was another comment made that, well, at-large positions should have a term limit. And the at-large positions, there are some that have served admirably for a lengthy period of time as an at-large position. And I believe it's appropriate to consider them as well and not, and then set a term limit for at-large. I want you to know that it already exists. It's the will of the board to pull any member from the committee for any reason. It's not just the designees that we have. It's not just our, our individual appointments to a committee, however that committee was designed. We could have someone removed from a committee or added to a committee at any time other than this annual event.
Correct. You always have the power to add and remove.
They, they work at the, the will of, the pleasure of the board for the will of the people.
They do. And I'm kind of glad that you brought up the whole more than one position as far as on a committee or a board, because in our last weekly update to you, we did give you a dual office holding memo to understand the legal issues that one person can't serve on more than one regulatory board. And we tried to describe the difference between that and advisory boards, where legally you could have more, but you could choose to only have, you could choose to limit people. So I, when we looked at these applicants, I, we actually did talk with and remove some people who wanted to be on more than one regulatory board, because that would be prohibited by law.
Right. Okay, well, Wendy Vocell, she, she's already on a, the CSAC Grants Subcommittee. And in addition, she has applied for many positions, anything that could be filled.
So, right, so you have two candidates here, and yes, that's correct. One of them sits on a Subcommittee.
Chairman?
Yes.
Maybe I can talk about something, and maybe we could, it'll help, it'll help us decide this. And so first of all, yes, you, you mentioned just a minute ago about a commissioner talked about, you know, term limits, times, two dual committees, obviously. That was, that was me. I still feel that, that, that no matter what committee they're on, whether it's defined by state statutes or whether it's defined by us, that you should only serve on one committee, period. That should be, that should be it. One committee, period. You should have a term limit, whether you're at-large or not. You should still have a term limit. I'll start with eight years. I think you should still have a term limit. Yes, we can remove anybody anytime we want if we have to, but you have a term limit for eight years, and you can go to another committee at the end of eight years and, and come back if you want to in four years or however we want to set it. I think we ought to have an attendance policy. If you miss more than, like, say you have monthly meetings. You're missing three or four meetings a year. I would, I would suggest that we, that we, that we, that we have an attendance policy. I think it should be reviewed and have to be done by us, all these committees, every year, because some of them had odd-year term limits, some of them have, have even-year term limits unless we change that. But right now, we're currently under audit, somebody, some of them have odd and even. But it ought to be done before the end of January, at the beginning of the new year, that we, that we, that we make sure all these committees are, are staffed and their, the positions are filled and they're done. So that, so that's, that's where I'm at. Like, I mean, I don't know either one of these nominees, and Commissioner Adams, I know she's, she's involved with this committee. I'm sure that Wendy McDaniel Vocell is a good, but I don't know if we want to. And I guess, Counselor, I need to ask you now, is that something we can put regulations on now? Or is it something that, I'll be glad to bring it back to the board at the next meeting or so as to term limits?
Right.
Da-da-da, the things I already mentioned. Do we want to?
Right, so those are.
What would make it easier for you?
Well, we, yeah, those would be things that you'd have to do by ordinance, because they, you have code provisions that apply to your board members now that we'd have to bring some code changes to you. So what I would recommend is that if you have these feelings now, that you let them guide you in your decision-making today, and that the board give me direction to bring back some code changes to you.
Let's say, for instance, we, let me give you an example. Let's say right now we put Wendy McDaniel Vocell on, on the Affordable Housing Committee Advisory Board. If, if I come back with what I've just discussed a few minutes ago, and we decide that it's the way we want to go in some fashion, after whatever we decide, that she can only serve on one committee, would it be fair then to ask that person, which committee do you want to serve on? Make your decision, which one you want to serve on? And then at the next meeting, when you bring it up, we can fill whatever committee spot she left or chose not to do. Is that, would that be proper, or?
If the board changes the code to make that a law for the county, then yes, that's what we would need to do, and if it was prospective. Or what could happen is if you didn't want to make it's, like, retroactive, that's what I meant to say, retroactive. You could, you'd have to clarify, I think, in the code amendment that you adopted, whether you wanted to make people currently serving more than two resign, or when that vacancy comes up, that they couldn't reapply, and they could only be.
Something we could talk about.
We can talk about that. There's details to discuss.
Table as to where we want.
Right.
That's all. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not for favor of doing what I discussed today. I would be glad if the board would so like to bring, to bring it back, and then we could go from there.
Well, again, you, you make an interesting point, but just the same way as all of us are not up for reelection at the same time, so that you have continuity of service, and you, you can perform, that was done with all the committees as well. So that this way, that it perhaps maybe the committee is working on a specific mission. I'll give you a perfect example.
Well, some of them have term limits that are on, on odd years. Those wouldn't be touched.
Yes.
So, I mean, I mean, there's a way.
I'll give you an example of the committee which you, you're, you're assigned to, which is Beach and Shores. Sometimes that process is going on for two and three years. If you did not have, if you had term limits, and then you also had a breakdown where we have odd and even assignments, then perhaps maybe the process would be interrupted by the input. As you pointed out earlier about the, the great work that the ELAP did, if that was intact now, right in the middle of this, we would have had a scenario where there would be people on the board that did not decide in that, in that direction, and did not evaluate in that direction. We'd be using the information that they developed, but yet they're not there.
Mr. Chairman, I would, could debate that with you further, that none of us are irreplaceable.
No, I, I, no, I, I agree with that, but we actually discussed the vulnerability, and I saw a couple of names that are no longer with us.
Understand what you're saying.
So now, but their input is still valuable.
Right.
I, I think when you have a committee that's sending something to us, that you want to have the consistency of the existing. I guess we got to tell them, you got to finish this all up before you're all out.
Mr. Chair, just as a point of order, I'm happy at the end of this to go back to some of those questions to get some.
Okay.
General direction from the board, but if we could just move through this right now, or?
Commissioner Adams had a.
I do, and in effort to kind of move us forward, and since AHAC is the first one, and it's my committee, I would like to nominate Wendy McDaniel Vocell. She actually comes to all of our meetings and participates as a, as a public, member of the public. Her work with UP puts her in that category that is missing citizen who was actively engaged as an advocate for low-income persons in connection with affordable housing. And we are going to be doing a lot of work this year, so I want to make sure we have, we're able to meet quorum and have a good, vibrant committee. So I would make that nomination for AHAC.
I, I admire the nomination. I, I will say that it does denote that she's on another committee. So I don't know if that's consistent with the board or the board's thoughts process, but let's see how it goes. So I'll second that motion.
And I'll just throw out, in this particular case, she is a member of the CSAC Grants Subcommittee. So she's not a member of the main committee. If she was, I think maybe that would be a different, different conversation. But the Grants Subcommittee, I feel like there's like 700 layers there, so we should be safe.
Mr. Chair, it appears that, so if we're going to set this policy that whether you're on a committee, however significant it is, you can also be on another committee. So by carrying Commissioner Adams' motion forward, you now are setting precedent that you can be on more than one committee, albeit it's a Subcommittee.
I understand what you're saying.
Whether it's a Subcommittee or the actual committee.
But I think at this point, we don't have a policy. We don't have a policy in place. So I don't feel like we can make a decision, just like I don't feel like we can make a decision about term limits or any of that stuff today if we don't have that policy in place, because we'd be counter to our own policy. So we could do one of two things. We can hold off on these and then have a discussion on those policies. So we're putting people on under the guise of all new policies. Or we can try to plug the holes that we have right now, and then change the policy, and that applies moving forward. I just, I, I don't want to belabor this, but I don't, I can't make a decision trying to anticipate what everybody's going to have a conversation about when I haven't even seen the policy as proposed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to bring it back to the board, as I said earlier, but I would agree with you, Commissioner Adams, I think we need to fill these holes now. But I'll be glad to bring it back if y'all would like. I'd be glad to bring it back.
Mr. Chair, if you quote, "Fill these holes now," and the policy changes, that will unwind some of these holes that we just filled.
That's correct. We.
We can hold off on it.
Going back, and there may be some folks that get appointed that will be appointed for a three-month period.
Or two weeks.
For two weeks.
Well, the way we left it at the last meeting, I'm sorry, I'm eating lunch. The way we left it at the last meeting is anybody that we held off on or didn't renew would still continue to serve until we put somebody else in their place. So none of our committees truly, except for, you know, in this case for AHAC, that member resigned. The member that used to fill this hole.
Correct.
Now, if we hold it open, perhaps we'll get some more applicants. I'm just saying, if you guys want to work out the policy, I'm totally fine with that. And we can just add that discussion to next meeting, hash it out, and then bring these back, because nobody's technically been kicked off yet. They've just not been re-approved. Correct?
Right. They serve until their successor is appointed.
That's correct.
So there's, there's that as well.
Mr. Chair, there's, there's additional questions, not only policy questions, but, well, policy questions. For example, I think Commissioner Erman brought up term limits. So now we would have to go and apply term limits. When do they start? Do they finish this term? Is it eight, or whatever he said, after our decision to renew somebody? I mean, there's, there's a lot of questions that unfortunately, if we don't get it right the first time with the right policies, procedures, then we're unwinding, potentially unwinding some appointments.
I, I believe that's the case. Which we're going forward, going by sentiments of some commissioners, but not a regula, regulation or a design going forward. I understand from Counselor that any adjustment of the ordinance will reset the clock as far as the appointment. Then if that's the case, if that one of the, let's say hypothetically, if we come back and say you can't serve on two boards, well, that's got to be changed immediately. But if you can't serve on two boards, or you've, you've served a long period of time as an at-large person or a committee member, that's another one that would reset at that time, correct? We don't, we don't, we don't ex post facto the.
Right. You'd have to explicitly, within your code change, say that it had retroactive application in order to make people have to resign. Otherwise, what would happen is when they came up for a reappointment, then that law would apply prospectively. Did, did that make sense? Yeah, when their term came up, then it would apply. But it wouldn't make everybody just have to resign that we're in more than one unless you put in that ordinance change that people, this would apply to sitting members and.
So we had someone that was serving on three or more boards, and they're now longer on the eligibility list. So did we tacitly apply it on the will of one?
No, no, you're seeing everybody that's applied that legally you can consider.
Legally?
Meaning that I had, that we did have one person that we took off because she wanted to be on more than one regulatory board, and that's not legally permitted.
Will you define what a regulatory board is?
Okay, so. Okay, so, for purposes of the dual office holding prohibition, which is a constitutional issue, it basically says you can't hold more than one office, and that would be a county commissioner and/or, and a city council member at the same time, and with respect to your boards and committees, it applies to those boards and committees that have ultimate decision-making power to affect people's rights, it's called a sovereign power, but it's, it's your planning and zoning commission that makes, directly makes decisions on people's property rights, it's your, like, code enforcement board that determines what penalties and violations exist, it's your environmental health board, again, that has this power that is delegated to them, as opposed to an advisory board where you can have, you can sit on more than one, because that really, they're not making the ultimate decision, they're advising you and giving you a recommendation that you don't have to take. I hope that, I know it's a little bit
So, you can only serve on one of P and Z, code enforcement, environmental control board, and
Code.
Code.
And code board. Right.
And Counselor, those are also governed by sunshine, those three.
Excuse me?
Those three are also governed by sunshine, it's a regulatory.
Yes, they're, well, they're all governed
That's the difference.
by sunshine.
And they file when they come into office and out of office as well.
Yes, they file Form 1.
They have to file the Form 1 when
Right, because of the type of committee they are on. They have to file a Form 1, exactly. They simply have more, they simply have more power, they've been delegated a power, for instance, if you, if your code board makes a decision and someone wants to appeal it, the appeal doesn't come to you, it goes to the circuit court
Right.
because they have power that's been delegated to them, like that.
That's why the dual office holds, because they could put themselves in a position where they would be testifying in front of the circuit if one of their local decisions was contested.
Right, because they have this ultimate decision-making power that you've not given to your advisory boards.
Right, and that could conflict with another board and/or their job if they were headed, particular jobs, so there, that's why you would have the
Having said that, in my opinion, even if it's not a legal impediment, you have given significant decision-making power to your advisory boards too,
Yes.
even though you can overrule it, but the fact that your, you know, ELAP or some of these other advisory committees are taking, sitting there and listening to applications and then turning it into a list that they forward to you, that's an important part in your decision-making process, so even if it's not a legal impediment, I do think it's still a very important role that has significant power.
Yes, in other words, just think of a particular board that could make a decision that would be, I don't even know what's the word, appealable to the circuit. Now, your advisory boards, no, but your regulatory boards, yes.
Exactly.
Hence the sunshine and the Form 1.
The construction advisory or
That is, that says another regulatory
That appeals to us.
Well, depends on what the issue is.
So, can we, can I just
Well, we had to have this conversation.
Oh, I know, I totally agree, we had to have this conversation, but I just want to know, like, where do you guys stand on it? Do you want them to stand, be on more than one board or not on more than one board?
Look, I, you know
Mr. Chairman, for years, it has been difficult
I'd be glad to bring it back to y'all in some sort of fashion, I'll work with the county attorney, and we can
I just want a general consensus. Like, I'm not asking for specifics, just like, what's the general consensus, so we can deal with, I just want to know how you want to move forward today.
I don't care.
Look, you know, we have to be responsive to the needs of the community, we have to be responsive to the availability of people that are willing to volunteer for the committees, the well-defined members that want to volunteer for committee, and to be committed for the greater good of the people of Indian River County, that's why many of the committees, we have our own appointees to be on that board, be on the board, as well as the at-large positions. I just have a great challenge when someone, when people are doing a good job, and it was so difficult in the past to get people to be committed for that mission, to be on a board, unpaid by the way, and to gear their life towards the greater good of the committee, and then suddenly, well, they've been here aren't too long. Let's look at the merits, let's look at what they've done, and if you could find fault, we always have the option to remove at any time. I just think that it's very disingenuous, it's kind of like the person who's committed their career and suddenly, well, you're too old, wow, how dare us, or you're, you've been here a long time, okay? Not based upon what has been happening for the greater good of the individuals, I just find it very unfair and uncomplimentary, and maybe that's why a lot of people don't volunteer when they say, you know, I could remove you at any time, or, you know, at the will. I can't say that I have not changed, made some changes in my appointments, and they were in P and Z, or they were in code, and I've done that over the years. I think we all had the opportunity to make a change, and every time that their term comes up, you always have the time, but I just think just to factor on, well, you've been here a long time, is they're doing a job, and they're doing it well, and they're committed. If they show up, like you said, you're big on attendance, yeah, we've always had that ability, you miss three meetings, you have the ability to be removed, okay? That's not an, just not an at-will decision, we could impose that at any time, you're missing meetings. Unfortunately, I had, we had a member, somebody else's appointee, that they were battling a life experience that none of us want to deal with, so they could not be at the meetings because they were treatment days, and that person was carried on for quite some time. We've always made a quorum in that area, so everybody was okay with it. Ultimately, the person won their, their life mission and was able to return back to duty and be on that committee, and then ultimately, a short time later, they said, all right, it's back and I'm gone. So, again, we have to be understanding that these are voluntary positions, that there's no, the reward in itself is doing the greater good for the people, and it's a reflection on us, so when we appoint somebody, we're carrying our thought process, not that we converse, I don't talk to my appointees, okay? Appointees are there to do work, I hope everyone does the same thing, because it has to be independent, but again, when you're selecting someone, you're selecting someone for their character and their content and their ability to work and express and contribute, not, gee, been here a long time, out. I just find that very disingenuous, unless things go stale, but then that would be a performance matter, and that would be another issue, and again, we have the ability to remove at any time, so I don't understand the big discussion, because
Can I respond, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, first of all, at-large members are not appointed by a single commissioner, as you know.
It's all of us.
It's appointed by all of us, so if you have a favorite appointee or something that's an at-large member, he might be a good person, but maybe the other four commissioners don't agree with you, that's up to the board as a whole. We're not talking about your District 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5 commissioners that is getting, that's getting appointed. You said it was difficult in the past to get members, I'm sure it was, I know it was, you know, I used to keep up with that and stuff, many, even many years ago, but now we have access to internet, we have access to emails, we have access to a lot of things. We advertised this list from, I think, December up until now, and we got a lot.
Undesigned.
Not all of them are qualified, maybe, but, you know, at least people stepped up to the plate and volunteered, so I would tell you that people are willing to volunteer, so it's not as difficult as it was in the past. The fact that somebody has been on the board, to me, more than probably eight to 12 years, in my opinion, as on a voluntary basis, on a thing, is, it's just time for us to look at, if they're an at-large member, and say, look, it's time for somebody else to step in at due point, we need another, we need another vantage point. You know that trend is happening, it's not happening in DC, which it probably needs to, but it's happening in the state of Florida, the governor's term limit, the representatives and senators' term limit, they're even talking about now taking county commissioners and school board members and limiting their term limits, for the reason those, that you don't get so entrenched in any level, be it a committee level or the national level or the state level, because national again's not doing it, except for the president, as you know, that we need to look at it. I think, I think, and again, I want to belabor this, because I want a continuous discussion, I think we need to fill, based on the criteria we have right now, fill what we have and do what we need to do, but I don't think it's disingenuous to say that, because there are people, or at-large members are what we're talking about. Commissioner Adams put it forward herself two meetings ago, that basically, if you're an at-large member, we didn't pay attention to you and you were there for life, so I will disagree with you on the at-large member. I think whoever you appoint from District 1, sir, is your appointment, and you have that luxury to keep them there as long as you want, District 2, I'm sorry, to keep them there as long as you want, so I think, I think we need to get over the adage that an at-large member, you're there for life. We've got some at-large members that have been there 15 years, that's too long.
My point was that we have not put that in an ordinance, we have not put that in a regulation, so we can't operate under that radar of the term limit. I understand, you want to get into term limits, I'm here 19 years, I've already had a lot of term limits. I had term limits because every four years, I asked the voters, am I doing a good job?
And that's what's important, that's
That's a term limit, that'll limit, because the voters will limit your terms.
Correct.
But as far as, let's get back to the Senate and the House, they already have term limits.
Right.
You know what, that's real awful, because a representative after two terms then runs for Senate and is Senate, and that's six years, so then they go for another six years, that's 12 years, so what they're talking about is really, they already have it.
Our discussion is over the at-large members, that's what you, our discussions
I understand it, but
We are
you just went in to elevate it to the Senate, and if the state's doing it, you have to be realistic and give accurate information, they already have it, and you know yourself that representatives become senators, then back to, then it becomes senators again, then they'll go back to county commission, that it achieves nothing other than disorientation and a learning curve once again, but it happens every day, so I don't even know what the big talk about it is. So, with that in mind, let's go back, we have a motion and a second on the table as far as this one item. If everybody's clear that we don't have to be distracted from any and all of the individual thoughts, I call a question.
Mr. Chair, again, I'm going to reiterate, if you do that, no matter if it's a subcommittee, they're still serving two different, separate, distinct parties, so we're splitting hairs now, if you're going to call this subcommittee of CSAC, but he's not actually the CSAC, he's still representing a particular body that differs from the body that he or she's putting in for, and that, completely different body, by the way.
And if they're in the Grant Subcommittee, then their information will go to the committee, that committee will move forward a strong recommendation that goes to this commission, correct?
They're still on two committees.
They're on the committee, they are on the committee, and I would, I would say that's, that's the case, that's why I brought it up, but then, in order to fill that position, not that it matters, someone said they have no experience, I mean, did you, did you read that part, okay? Has a desire to advocate for low-income persons but doesn't demonstrate any experience. So, now, we're at another juncture, do you want to appoint somebody that is qualified with experience and knowledge and the capacity, or do you want to appoint someone that wants to fill a slot that because they're fortunate enough not to be on another committee, so they're more favored? Wow. You see what the per number, it brings?
That's not the policy right now, that's what the policy is, what it
But it's being well discussed, and this whole track is being engineered in that fashion.
I just said I would bring it up, if y'all don't want me to bring it up, I won't bring it, I won't bring it up at the next meeting, I was going to come up with a policy later on, but not today.
Okay, so today, no rules apply, and we have a motion and a second, so we're going to just vote on one individual, and if
There's been a motion made for Wendy McDaniel.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Let's move ahead.
Question's been called. Aye.
I'll tell you when the question gets called.
Someone already said it, I didn't say it, someone else already said it.
Yeah, but I'm the chairman, okay? Simmer down.
It's parliamentary procedure.
What are you talking about?
When a question is called, you vote. I'll ask our counsel, when the question is called
You're out of order.
Is that correct?
You're out of order. Just a point for clarification.
I'd be happy to look at
Thank you. If you want to change the rules when you sit in the center, you change the rules, okay? But until then, it's now time to call a question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried unanimously, thank you. Counselor, we're going to move on to the Agriculture Advisory Committee, but we have no qualified applicants.
That's correct.
So, we're just going to leave that position vacant. Next item is Beach and Shores Preservation Advisory Committee.
I nominate Michael Koper.
Mr. Chairman
Who's been here the entire time.
I've got, I've got two, that's my committee, I've got
That's not a rule.
I've got two positions on that committee that Michael Saul resigned from and David Morgan, and I have talked to all these applicants, and I would like to recommend Michael Koper and James Power. Mike is John's Island Director of Maintenance and Management, and he was very instrumental in helping us get the Sector 4 project, along with getting the applications and easements and stuff, he's always been at all the meetings long before we even talked about Sector 4, so he'd be a great, great person, and Mr. Power is born and raised here in Indian River County, went to Texas as an engineer for many years and back, and he's expressed great pleasure in trying to help out and from an engineer standpoint, so those, those are my two recommendations, I don't mean to take away from Commissioner Moss.
Well, that's fine, if you're making a motion, I'll second it.
Is he nominating one at a time, Chair?
Yes, we need to nominate one at a time, so if the maker of the second will withdraw and allow the maker to make a motion for a single member, so we can fill the slots appropriately, it would be greatly appreciated, that would be procedural.
Mr. Chairman
Maker of the second?
She nominated Mr. Koper.
I, I
Right?
I can hear.
Okay.
You withdraw your nomination at this time?
No, I stand by my nomination, I guess we
No, you understand, no, we have to delaminate that nomination so that we can do singularly.
Well, I
Individuals, we nominated two individuals Individuals, we nominated two individuals, so we need to nominate only one individual.
Right, that's what I did. I nominated Michael Koper.
No, you did not. You seconded his nomination, that was for two individuals, for that Beach and Shores Committee. That was your second.
Being asked to withdraw your second, Mr. Chair.
Let's start over.
Oh, okay. Oh, fine. Yes, it's, no, I asked him if he was making a motion, I wasn't sure. I said, "If he was making a motion." So-
The recess wasn't long enough.
We can withdraw that.
All right. And now, and you withdraw your motion, right?
Is she nominating Mr. Koper?
Yes. Yes, she will, once, once-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Once the motion is withdrawn, which I hear is what you're doing, correct?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Yes.
All right. She withdrew her second.
Okay, I've been nominating-
Your second, the second was for your nomination-
Okay.
For two individuals.
Okay, do you want to do one?
Let's do one at a time.
Okay. Good.
Okay, so you withdrew your original nom- nomination. Now let's go with your singular member nomination.
With respect to the Chair, I, I agree with you completely on that. I will nominate Mr. Koper to fill one of the vacant seats.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Mr. Koper to be on the Beach and Shores. Any further discussion? Any other nominations? We'll continue. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried unanimously. Congratulations to Michael Koper. We now have a second opening for the vacancies, for the BCC appointee at-large position.
I'll nominate James E. Power.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Next item is the Children's Services Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chair.
There is one vacancy for the member at-large.
And may, may I just state that today, I was informed that two of these individuals have withdrawn their name from consideration. One is Brooke Hall, and one is Janet Sofield.
And-
Thank you. I would like to nominate Jan Williams, second.
We have a nomination for Jan Williams. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Congratulations to Jan Williams. The Economic Development Council, EDC, there are two vacancies, members at-large. We have Todd Howder, which is, he is currently a member, Lolita Jenke, Lance Lunford, Vincent Savia, and Carl Zimmerman, who has been, he's currently a member as well. Both of those members have been members since, Todd Howder and Carl Zimmerman have been members since 2013.
I nominate Lance Lunford. For which position? For a member at-large. But there's, there's two of them. So which position? I think they're, they're just both member-at-larges, aren't they? They're both members at-large, right? Right, but if, okay, well-
Not hearing the second?
I was, I was, wanted to ha, I had, I'm the one that had suggested that we not reappoint them at the last meeting, which wasn't necessarily to indicate. Oh, I see. So which-
Correct.
I got it. Okay. That makes sense.
That's what I was trying, so I, I had asked that we just hold them over to have a discussion, not that they weren't necessarily appropriate for reappointment, since we're going through the economic development study, and we're seeking input from different areas. In the interim, I, and I have had some concerns with some of the committees I sit on, not specifically this one, but some, this one is one of them, about attendance. So I just wanted to let everybody know that I did pull the attendance on EDC, and both Mr. Howder and Mr. Zimmerman have almost perfect attendance, which I cannot say for some of the other members on our committee, so for what that is worth.
So, Mr. Chair.
I, I had a motion, but not a second, so that motion dies. Thank you.
So the question is, with Howder and Zimmerman, notwithstanding any discussion of term limits, which may come back before us, am I hearing that these two are ineligible to become candidates?
No, I don't think so. I had just asked to stay that decision on those two particular ones, because they were at-large positions that had been there for quite some time, but I don't feel that they're ineligible. In fact, I believe at the last meeting, counselor indicated that they would be happy to continue to serve.
Right, they are eligible. What you did last meeting was just simply hold them over for consideration, because you had other applicants-
Correct.
-that had applied. Because your initial direction to, to us was to go try to get more interest, which we did.
Well, Commissioner, hearing your, your thought process, because I know we are deep in a process, and that brings up what I had said about that term, whole term limit policy that has not been discussed, approved, or in ordinance. What happens there is that we, we are at a loss if we take the individuals out. So rather than hold them, hold it over to continue the process, I believe that we should accept the nomination that is not streamlining this for any one particular need, but we do not have an ordinance that states that you, you can't serve if you've been there too long. And if there's something going on in that, that committee that's positive, and you've verified all of the requirements that you're concerned about, and that many of us are concerned about, about attendance, after all, it's great to say you're a name-only, but it's even better if you can actually do the work. So with that spirit in mind, I'm happy to accept any appointment or nomination that you feel fit.
Economic Development is a, is a committee that I wanted to hear what you guys wanted to do, because it's important, economic development is important to many of the commissioners here, you guys keep talking about it, we have the study going on. Do I think that the committee is working great? I mean, the committee functions. Do I think the committee could be restructured and, and do a better job of what they are tasked with doing? Yeah, I do. Do I think that there's people in the community that probably have more voice and more information and, and to offer than the way this committee is currently structured? Yes, I do. I mean, I think some, we have a, it's a good committee, there's a lot of great people on there, but I think sometimes it's hamstrung by the size, the sheer size of it. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a county committee, but it ends up being run a little bit differently because of some of the groups that sit on it, that's not necessarily specific to the county. So maybe that is a different discussion for a different day, but that was what I wa, I wanted some input from you guys, on what direction you wanted to see EDC going, because of the work that's being done, because of the position that's coming online, because of some of the other moving parts in the community. And I know it's important to some of the commissioners, so more than making a decision on, on a specific member, that wasn't my goal. My goal is, I need some input from you guys, and this is a good opportunity to do that. So does anybody have any input on EDC, about the way it's functioning, or what you expect out of it, and that kind of thing?
Not to laminate what another commissioner had said about the longevity, I, I, I think we're all familiar with those two individuals that, that are currently on the board. Familiar with one of the others that has been nominated, or, and another member that's here today. And I think they're all well unqualified to, to be able to serve on the committee with positive input. So, you know, I, i- if you have something in mind, as far as, you're there, you're there in the room.
Mm-hmm.
If, I mean, you're the best judge of what's happening in the room. We only see minutes.
Yeah.
And that's the way it is. That's called sunshine.
Commissioner Lor, I know you've had a lot going on in the economic development realm. Do you have any input for this particular committee? Not necessarily with the membership, but just the direction. I know the Oslo stuff is important.
Right, it, that is, and like you mentioned, with others coming on board on the payroll, that, that does modify things. I will say that this particular exercise is to select members.
Mm-hmm.
You know, my thoughts are, are that it, under your leadership, is, is working the way it should. I will say there's something to be said about attendance by a volunteer, and, Mr. Chair, I would motion Mr. Mark Howder to be reappointed, or continue to work, however rewarding this.
Todd Howder?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd be happy to second that.
And you're happy to second it? We have a motion and a second.
What was the motion, sir? I'm sorry.
To appoint Todd Howder. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Congratulations, Todd Howder. Now, we have another member at-large. There is two vacancies, and we have Carl Zimmerman, Vincent Savia, and Lolita Jenke.
And Lance Lunford.
He's already been nominated and not seconded.
Or a different position, maybe?
No, that position, ma'am. Thank you.
I, I, I think with some of the interest with the economic development study, and the great dialogue that has been fostered in that realm, I would be happy to nominate Lance Lunford.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there any other nominations? Point to clarification, he was nominated and not seconded on a previous occasion. Counselor, your opinion?
There's, there's two separate openings, so I think he can be considered for the second one.
Different seat.
Right.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Just want to ensure that we're doing everything by policy and regulation, that we have intact. Planning and zoning, P and Z, there is a member-at-large vacancy. We have Richard Betancourt, Todd Brugnano, currently serving, Paul Golden, Lolita Jenke, Tom Lauder, Vincent Savia, and Diana Vassell.
I'll nominate Tom Lauder.
We have a motion and a second. It's one position. Do we have any other nominations? Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll just add that by Mr. Lauder's name, it says District Three, he's actually District Four.
He's actually, so he resides in your district? Well, we'll make that notation, because the record reflects District Three. Okay, is there any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Congratulations, Tom Lauder. Counselor, I believe that concludes the question, debate, and assignment, and appointment.
It does.
It was rather lengthy, longer than anticipated, and what other corrective measures do we have to take?
Nothing on this item.
We still have one vacancy available.
For Ag, I think, and we don't have a Farm Bureau-
Right, and, and we do actually have two vacant positions on the Community Development Block Grant Citizen Advisory Committee, but they have income eligibilities that we need to kind of sift through. We're not ready to bring them.
Okay, so there were, there were requirements on, that, that one appointment on the block grant that have to be satisfied, so we just can't pick out of somebody who wishes to be on a committee?
Exactly.
There are requirements that are constraints.
That's right. It's going to take us a little bit of time to figure that out.
And as far as Ag advisory?
It needs to be a Farm Bureau repres, an actively involved in Ag and a Farm Bureau representative, so I will work with that smaller segment of the population to try to bring somebody back. But there's no real immediacy.
Does it needs to be an, an employed member of Farm Bureau?
No.
Or a member of Farm Bureau?
A member of Farm Bureau.
I'll help you with that.
From the advocacy side.
Oh, you, you're one of the members. So am I.
I used to be, but I'm part of a maker with a member.
Well, Commissioner Fletcher, since you are actively involved in agriculture, and your gardening, and a member of Farm Bureau, you could apply.
Yeah, that's right. Bob Sousa asks me about my farm every, every time he gets a chance.
I'm telling you.
Even have the county administrator admire my cabbage and-
You could-
Others.
Start a farmer's market there at your house.
Ah, then you got to start with the, the booth, and, you know, farm stand, and I admire the ones who are doing it. I've been visiting them.
A whole new world for you.
All right, so those two will be remaining vacant at this time? Anything further on committees? Because we're about ready to switch hats, folks. Seeing none? We have, I think, Hama Chumeta is here, and going to-
Excuse, excuse me?
Oh, we got 14B, which is the resolution to set the second hearing-
Thank you.
-for special assessment, providing for the replacement of coverts for Waters Edge Phase Number Two subdivision. Counselor?
Good afternoon. This is our second resolution to set the, the hearing time for the Waters Edge subdivision culver replacements, as you mentioned. We had the first resolution, I think it was in October, and the work has been, being completed. It's not completed yet, but it is beyond, and is working on it. By our code, we have to set a second hearing where the board sits as an equalizing board to determine the individual assessments on each individual lot, and allow the owners of the land who are going to be affected to come in and appeal. And we're asking the court, or, again, we're asking the board to set, to pass the resolution, and then set the, the date, which is April 8th, to allow notice and the correct paperwork to go to all the landowners who are affected, and so we're asking that for today.
Any questions of Counselor? And the motion is?
Approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairman Lor, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Nice presentation. Now we'll move on, because 14C has been eliminated, and will be discussed at a further de- Now we'll move on because 14C has been eliminated and will be discussed at a further date. We're now moving on, changing hats to the Solid Waste Disposal District. Item 16B, I see Hamachi in the queue. That's approval of the SWID meeting minutes of December 3rd, 2024. You all have the option to review them. And the motion is? That's a good one. Second. Motion by Commissioner Herman, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the SWID meetings for December 17th, 2024. Motion is? That's a, and a second. Motion by Commissioner Herman, seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And a request for approval of change orders for CK Contractors and Development CK for the landfill improvements project.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Hamon Schumeth, Managing Director of the Solid Waste Disposal District. I know everybody's tired, so I'm going to try to go through this pretty quickly.
We're always ready.
I have one slide for this, right here. And so, the reason that this project was three-part. We basically went out to bid for a concrete pad and construction of the high-pressure skid at the landfill. And it also included a driveway crossing that we needed for utilities for the No Petro project, the gas line, the communication line, and the water extension across this bridge. And then also improvement to put in an automated scalehouse system. And out of those three projects, we went out to bid, we received no bid responses. And ultimately, we used CK as our labor contractor to proceed. Their portion of the work with the pad, the concrete pad for the high-pressure gasket has gone well, and that's been completed and proceeding. In fact, while on the lower right-hand picture, you could see the big hydrogen sulfide vessels that are on the pad. So, again, the work that CK did using Summit to do the concrete pad has been great. The second project was, this bridge crossing has run into a lot of challenges. We started in the dry season, then we ran into the wet season, Hurricane Milton, and so on and so forth. What I'm showing you on the left is sort of the new driveway, and it's got the sleeves in there for the landfill gas line, the communication line, and the water main extensions. Those have all been done and taken to the northern parcel by No Petro. Our residents are using this new driveway. But what has not been completed is, on the right, you have one side of the canal that's been done through the permit, and the western side has not. So, the bottom right corner needs to look like your top right corner. And so, we've had sort of delays in proceeding on this project. So, besides sort of the weathers and things like that, I mean, we did have a permit from Indian River Farms Control District. We had a 43-inch pipe, if you will, that they had approved. And once they came out to the site, they said, "No, that pipe's not going to work, and you need to go to a 48-inch elliptical reinforced concrete pipe," and so on and so forth. So, we've had a lot of change orders, if you will, on this project, and we want to go ahead and complete this. It exceeded our purchasing department, county administrator thresholds, and that's why I'm here in front of you today to request approval to a change order to CK. Again, I can go into a lot of details of what happened, if you like, but we do have a part, you know, the bridge is done, you know, east side is done. We need to complete the west side and requesting board approval for a change order to CK today.
The 43-inch pipe isn't in place yet, is it?
It was purchased, it was brought to site, and then we were told we couldn't use it. So, we will repurpose it, but we had to go and buy the new pipe. So, the bridge is already, there are a couple pieces of the bridge that it still needs to be completed on the west side. So, we need to take the old access road out, put in some of the new piping that we have on site, and then, you know, complete the riprap and the sod on the western portion of the canal. What's been sort of increasing cost is that we have sheet piles there and pumps to, you know, route the water. That's costing us, you know, $20,000, $25,000 or more a month in just rental costs. So, we really wanted to come to the board, get this approved, get CK's ready to come out there, I believe, next week and start completing the project. We've had some discussions with the Indian River Farms. I mean, you know, there have been some concerns on their part about hog poop in the water and not meeting water quality criteria and things like that. But we've got some solutions on what we can do with the water in the meantime and get this dewatered and get CK in there to finish the project. So, we're trying to wrap it up before the next rainy season.
Who said you couldn't use the 43-inch pipes?
Indian River Farms Control District. So, we had a permit for the 43-inch pipe. It was brought, you know, CK was issued a purchase order, they bought the pipe, it was brought to the site. And then there was an inspection done by the farms, and they said, "No, that pipe's not going to work." When you have, say, a 100-year flood or something like that that occurs, that that pipe was going to create a restriction, and we weren't able to utilize it.
And they approved the initial permit with 43-inch pipes?
They did, they did.
Well, we've got a different kind of problem. We're five inches short, and we're working on an approved process, approved approved pipe?
Yep.
43 inches, and now it's five inches short? They've changed their position?
Yep, and we...
For the folks at home, Hamachi is shaking yes.
Kim Lee Horn was the engineer of record. They designed and permitted the project. They did the groundwater modeling, if you will, for, you know, for the piping to show that it would work. However, the Farms District reviewed the modeling. They had their own independent engineer look at it, and they just felt that the pipe was not going to work. I do have Ronnie Jones here. You want to add anything to that, Ron? I know he worked...
Yeah, I'd love to hear about this change because it's going to cost our taxpayer how much? What's the difference?
Just in the piping?
Because they've changed their mind? And not the specifications according to a calculated projection in the past?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Ronnie Jones. I'm the Assistant Managing Director for Solid Waste. So, a couple of the changes that we've encountered with the Farms District. One was the pipe. As Hamachi mentioned, this pipe was in the design presented by Kim Lee Horn. The permit was approved by the Farms District and provided. But after a follow-up inspection by the district before the pipe was installed, as Hamachi mentioned, they decided that it was inadequate. And this was based on their own engineer coming back after the fact and making this request of us. So, in order for this project to proceed on, we went ahead, as Hamachi mentioned, purchased the 48-inch pipe so we could get this project done and beat the rainy season. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do that, and subsequently additional delays due to asking, again, by the district for us to install sheet piles, engage in bypass pumping, and then subsequent water testing to determine if there are any contaminants or anything like that as part of the project. So, we've encountered numerous delays brought on by the Farms District that is eating into this project's budget and causing some overruns, as you have seen in front of you. So, we have two choices. As I see it, we can leave the project as it is or find a way to fund it so we can finish it. As Hamachi also stated, we do have the remaining 48-inch elliptical RCP pipe that's yet to be installed. So, we have the left-hand side that has to be removed. The old corrugated metal pipe that's there also has to come out. Once the new elliptical RCP is installed, the canal has to be regraded and rebuilt to the district's standards in order to complete the project. While I'm mentioning that, that was another change that was brought on by the Farms District to us. They ran counter to the original design by Kim Lee Horn. So, we've encountered a lot of financial constraints by the contractor and ultimately to us from the district in order to make this project complete.
You know, got to get the job done.
We do.
We need it for the people's asset. I get it operationally. Just have tremendous challenge with the mind change. And then, it's a mind change. It's not, you were given the proper calculations and went forward with the proper calculations, and then now they were deemed to be improper. And now, because of that, the taxpayer will be, how much was the addition? I want you to say it on the microphone.
So, for the pipe itself, it was, I believe, Commissioner $45,000 to $48,000 change order for the pipe alone.
Okay, so, so about $50,000 in the pipe? Plus, then we have to take out the pipe to put it in and clean it up, and hopefully we can sell it again?
Well, that's the one good thing that's happened here is the change was made before the pipe is actually installed. So, while the 43-inch was delivered and stockpiled on site, that is where it still sits on landfill property. It was never installed. So, we do have it. We can't use it on another project. But unfortunately, we were not able to use the 43-inch pipe, and we had to then turn around and go buy the 48-inch elliptical pipe, and that part has been installed or a portion thereof has.
Because this bid goes back to January 28th. At what point in time was the county notified by the Water Control District? And how much of a delay, as it relates to this dewatering and bypass, have we incurred in terms of expenses because of the, arguably, the reversal on the permit that they reviewed and issued and then subsequently provided comments?
I don't have specific dates. But I do recall that it took close to a month of a delay just in the pipe change alone because elliptical RCP pipe is not something that's readily available. So, it took a little bit of time to locate it and have it delivered. However, that delay pushed us into a rainy season. That triggered the need for the sheet pile cost and the bypass pumping. That created additional delays in the project. Getting back to the county administrator's original question, I would say overall, we're at least six to nine months of delay in this project due to various changes.
So, because it looks like, based on this, in Section 8, the sheet pile was about $137,000. The pump was $28,000. The dewatering and the bypass is about $55,000. That doesn't include, I mean, so basically, this whole work order is related to the reversal of a issued permit?
Yes, in large part, yes.
$648,000.
Yeah.
But, we hear more. I mean, that is incredible, Counselor. Truthfully, we got to get the job done. And any legal remedy here would probably not bear any fruit for the taxpayer, nor for this commission, nor for the district. Is that fair assumption? So, we are faced with a dilemma. Get the project done and hope that, well, you can recoup some of the losses by selling the pipe. You know people that might need 43 inches, right?
Yes, sir. Or we use it on one of our own county projects and offset that cost.
And that would be, we could recoup about the $48,000?
Yes, sir.
That's about it, if that, or maybe wire sale. We can recoup some of it, but we're still at loss for all of that funding because someone changes their mind, a board changes their mind, a state board changes their mind. I want the public to know that it wasn't our staff's responsibility, that it wasn't the staff's design, intent, or CK to make this decision, that it was imposed upon. Because I hold the team in high regards. I know this board does too. And it would be a different scenario if you just said, "Well, let's just get away with the 43." And I don't want that to be the perception. They did what they were told to do according to spec and design. That's what you're stating.
Yes, sir.
Then you were told that's a foul ball.
Yes, sir.
Here's the new specs. Here comes the cost. Just wanted thoroughly discussed before the public so they know that mission was done according to direction and not at the will of one or two individuals. It was really, we're in this dilemma because of the will of a district.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, it probably should be noted that, other circumstances, we have bondable companies. And although these circumstances are different, and we'll call them the culprit being the district, they're not a bondable issue that we could go after for recuperation of dollars. That could probably be handled in a civil arena, but do you want to pick that fight?
Well, no, and I appreciate that. That's why I asked counsel. I don't think we see any fruit. We might see the small berries at best or a consolation prize, but we're not going to see a return or restitution on an ill-fated decision or a change of mind because they will justify their decision, and we will then have court costs. So, we can only add to the problem. We can't add to the solution. So, it's not about, it's about cost averaging and cost avoidance.
And the rental pump's running every day.
That's correct, with the price tag. Okay, so, with that, now that we felt all the angst and understanding and got all the information out, it's time to...
Mr. Chairman, I'll move staff recommendation. Kim Lee Horn, could they be like, "Hey, give us a break on our bill or something?" Because she made us purchase $43,000 pipe.
43 inches.
Commissioner, so...
Is that an option?
Well, it appears that they acted on information that was approved. It's not, they did not act wanton.
I agree.
They acted direct upon engineering principles, recommended it, and...
It was approved.
They approved it!
But the Farms District changed it.
Well, they changed it after the fact, after they said, "Yeah, that's good."
Right.
I was just throwing that out there.
If that's the case, I don't see how we can hold Kim Lee Horn to any sort of value on this. I think there's no address to them. They did what they know how to do and did it according to oil, and they got approved.
Right.
And disapproved.
And that's a good suggestion, Commissioner, obviously. But I will say this about Kim Lee Horn. They, at numerous occasions, held discussions with the Farms District individually and at their board and appealed these requests. Each time those requests were denied, pointing to the fact that they're independent engineers suggested otherwise. So, Kim Lee Horn did as much as any other firm could do to appeal to the district on behalf of the county and the board for our sake to seek some relief in some of these changes.
I understand.
I'll just throw it out there.
Oh, that's fine. So, we have a motion?
Yeah, I gave you the motion.
And a second? All in favor? Opposed? Proceed. Motion approved unanimously. That's a tough one. Let's move on to 16B5, which is an update on the invitation to bid for the landfill and customer convenience centers. Hamachi Mather.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners, Hamon Schumeth, Managing Director for the Solid Waste Disposal District. I do have a copy of these slides in front of you. I did make an edit to one of the slides. I'll say that upfront. It's related to the convenience centers. I had a typo about the Indian River Sherifs, so it should have been Office. So, I've corrected that, I think, on your markup and here on the slides as well. And then I think we had also prohibition of weapons, and I've struck that as well. The purpose of today is to just give you an update. We've started the invitation to bid process in early January for the operation maintenance of the county landfill and the customer convenience centers. And just wanted to kind of catch you up to speed on where we are. Quick timeline, again, January 10th. There are two independent invitations to bid, so they're separate. They'll be awarded as two separate agreements. They'll be awarded as two separate agreements and opportunities there for one or more companies to, to potentially win both. But, but they are going to be two standalone, separate agreements. They were issued on January tenth. We have this as an invitation to bid with a qualification phase. So the initial was a qualification phase. Deadlines were January thirty-first and, and the vendors that submitted it were, were qualified. I didn't have to notify anybody that they were not qualified to continue on. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting on February fourteenth. All the potential bidders were in attendance and here we are today, March eleventh, kind of giving you this update. Since I wrote the agenda item, you know, we did issue an addendum whereas this Friday, we originally this coming Friday, we were going to have both bids open up. However, only the convenience center bid is opening this Friday. And then next Wednesday, we're, we're going to be opening the landfill bid. We're just giving them a little bit more time on the landfill because we, we issued an addendum yesterday to clarify some things. The, the plan here is to come back to you on April eighth for a recommendation of award. Again, we'll get, we'll get the bids Friday and next Wednesday. We'll evaluate them. We've had assistance from Kestrel Consulting and they've used our consultant S two L I to assist as well. So they'll help us evaluate this. We'll put an agenda item together and, and the, the plan is to come to you for a recommendation on April eighth. We have included sample agreements in the process. I've given opportunities for vendors to kind of make comments on those. And again, they're sample agreements. We're, we're look to, once the award is done, to finalize the agreements and bring that to you on, on May sixth. The overall purpose is to get everything, you know, awarded and approved and go, go live on October one, twenty twenty-five. The, this will impact our budget and that's why my goal is to get, get this awarded on April eighth. So we would have an idea of what the budget impact's going to be for, for these two major contracts versus with. Overall goals and objectives, again, a competitive process via an invitation to bid with the pre-qualification that I mentioned. We always want to, again, continue to maintain quality of service, increase efficiency, always looking to recycle more and, and certainly manage costs through a, you know, procurement process, competitive process. The landfill invitation to bid, I'll just quickly kind of walk through this and it's a busy slide. The, the term, the current term was a seven-year and then a seven-year renewal. And we did do an extension to Republic Services, which expires to September thirtieth. This new contract looks at a base ten-year term with an additional ten-year option as well. So this could potentially be a twenty-year agreement for both the landfill and the convenience centers. The hours of operations, what we have done is we, we are open seven days a week. We're closed five holidays from seven AM to five PM. What we have done is included an option to obtain a savings, if you will, if the, if the board were to consider closing the landfill on Sundays. So I'm not asking for any, any decision today, but just to let you know that we have included pricing in, in the bid process. So when we come back to you at a later time, I'll be able to share with you what that savings is. We certainly have our reasons. We have seen based on some traffic studies and our sort of financial analysis that it's not very cost effective to operate on Sunday for us. We also realize that all the other landfills around us are closed on Sunday. And so what, what tends to happen is a lot of out of county waste starts gravitating toward Indian River County on Sundays. And so those are some of the staff reasons why we included the option to consider closing. But again, no decision on, on closure today. We'll have some financial information to, to give you at the time of award. That's when you'll make a decision if, if it's, if it's worth closing our facility on Sunday or not. Yes.
Amantu, if I could just enter it real quickly.
Sure.
Understand St. Lucie and Bravard has, have been closed on Sundays for a while. So I know we're going to get into this later, but you just mentioned that earlier that there doesn't seem to be a lot of vehicular traffic and tonnage on Sundays. So that doesn't sound like they're coming from St. Lucie or Bravard.
So, so what, yeah, the good point, what they're gravitating toward is our convenience centers. And so that in turn then, the waste then comes to the landfill. It may not come on Sunday, but, but throughout the week it'll, it'll gravitate toward there as well. So, no, I appreciate the question there. The scope of work, the class one landfill, operating a, a permitted class one facility. We've, we've done that as a price per ton. That's going to continue to be, you know, bid that way. And I'll skip over to the note for a second. And all the other items at the landfill are, are part of this bid. Currently what we did was we have basically the landfill as a price per ton operation. And then everything else fell into what we call non-class one. And it was part of the convenience center package. So a lot of services at the landfill were part of the, the convenience center pricing. What we've done with this new invitation to bid is we've separated out, everything at the landfill will be part of the landfill agreement. Everything related to the convenience centers will be part of the convenience center package. So a lot of the services at, at the landfill are now part of this bid. So managing our area for recycling, what we call the municipal recycling facility for where we receive single stream materials, cardboard, that's part of the operation. Loading the materials on trailers that go to St. Lucie County, that's part of the operation. Managing the waste tires, our scrap metal, white goods area, our household hazardous facility, our small load drop-off area. There's a warehouse facility where we process styrofoam and things like that. And then at times pre and post services at, at the landfill. We've also included other general services. One, one of the big things here with the interchange coming on ninety-five and Oslo corridor. We, we, we do have some off-site litter right now, but we've expanded the off-site litter in this bid. Just going to go top of my head, we basically have actually gone all the way down to sixty-sixth Avenue north to Fourth Street. Same thing on seventy-fourth Avenue, go all the way north to Fourth Street. We got the Oslo corridor pretty much, I think, east of ninety-five, all, all the way to sixty-sixth Avenue, that whole corridor. And then south on seventy-fourth, sort of down toward the prison area as well. And I believe even on, I'm not sure if that's twenty, twenty-fifth street southwest. But again, the, the road that, that goes east-west along the prison. And again, we've done that because we're going to have a lot of traffic coming through. We're going to have a major interchange there as well. And we want to make sure, this is going to be a gateway from the south, if you will, to Indian River County. And we want to, we've included cost in here to assist our road and bridge crew, but at least to have, have sort of assistance from our landfill contractor to help pick up the litter in and around the landfill area. We have some old equipment that, that's been outdated. I, I have a styrofoam machine that I believe is, is probably about, that I, we got as a, as a grant for one dollar about twenty years ago. It's kind of on its last leg. So we included a new styrofoam machine, processing machine in the warehouse. We process a lot of, well, we obtained a lot of film. The film recycling program is growing and, but we, we transport that to St. Lucie County. So we've included a vertical baler in here for us to manage the film and, and recycle and send that out for recycling right here from Indian River County. The, the ice machine is just kind of a, a small item there, but it's utilized for, for their labor. The air compressor is old and I wanted to make sure that, that that's replaced. The fueling facility, we currently have existing above-ground tanks. They were from DOT that we basically moved from forty-first street by the fleet to the landfill about fifteen years ago. They're, they're in good shape. My initial intent was to replace them, but we're gonna, as a cost-saving measure, we clarified yesterday that the vendors can continue to use them if, if at any point they become non-compliant. Then, then we'll discuss about, you know, replacing, replacing that. And then we have an, an old wash bay area that they can utilize as well. The convenience centers, any questions on the landfill before I go to the convenience centers?
Are you looking for input? You're just looking for input today, right?
If you like, I mean, we've, the, the bids are out. Apologize that we've kind of come to you after the, we've started the process. But again, we've, we've issued some clarifications. We've got the bid structured in a way that we'll be able to come back and, and give you some options on that. One item that I did skip here was on item one. One of the things that we included is in the base bid is, is for them to purchase cover material, the dirt and the mulch for cover. We recognize that, that that could be a, a big add-on expense. Atlas Organics currently provides mulch for cover at, at no cost. We provide it no cost to our contractor. So we put in an option for, for a deduction, if you will, if we continue to provide mulch and, and dirt to the contract. So, I mean, certainly if you have any input, I'm happy to take it.
Well, I have, I have CSAC and at three o'clock. So I just wanted to, since I've read through all this stuff.
Okay.
I just wanted to jump into my, my input before it gets to, before I have to leave. So as far as a landfill being closed on Sunday, I, you know, the landfill isn't as big of a deal to me on Sunday. But if you're going to close a landfill on Sunday, like you can't, you're, you're not going to be able to close the convenience centers on Sunday. That's my opinion. I think if you touch a weekend day at those convenience centers, you're gonna, it's going to cause a lot of problems. My suggestion is that whoever is doing the contract has more trucks there to stage or switches them out more frequently if that's a problem on Sunday. I think also with the convenience centers, it says that you're going to have three attendants at each. And I'm assuming that's because of checking the driver's licenses and then two on the hill or up top.
Right.
Is there space at all of them for two attendants or for three attendants total? Like I'm thinking Roseland and like Winter Beach specifically are smaller.
Minimum of usually two at each center. Some have more. I think Oslo has three to four there. Because we introduced this driver's license requirement at the convenience centers as an option right now in the bid, we, we did include as a bid option to provide a savings. And if, if at the, if at some future meeting, the board decides that we do not want to impose checking driver's license, then we could, you know, we'll have a cost savings in there on their bid for that.
And I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem with moving towards something like that. I know the Roseland, the Roseland community is always very concerned about people coming in from Barefoot Bay and, and time. Cause that is a constrained convenience center. For those of you that haven't been there, I would take a field trip to Roseland. It's not, I wouldn't say it's the shining star of our convenience centers, but it is what it is. It serves its function. But it, it does have some space constraints and things of that. So just, that's my two cents on that. But I do think the logistics of trying to figure out the driver's license checks is, it probably needs a little bit more fleshing out. I know they're doing this in other areas.
We, we're marrying this from Port St., City of Port St. Lucie does that. They check driver's licenses for every resident that comes through.
How do they deal with people that are residents or part-time residents?
I'm not sure what database they're using, but they do, if somebody is visiting, they live in Port St. Lucie, but they're from New York and they have a New York license, they, they'll scan the New York license. And I think behind the scenes, they're able to go back and verify that, that, that person is a resident of, of City of Port St. Lucie.
Okay, so that was a question I had. And then lastly, when you start talking about the trailers, no trailers at convenience centers, I think that's going to be a problem. And again, I understand what we're trying to accomplish by limiting the amount of, of bulk that's being taken to the convenience centers. But again, if those, if there's another driver that's part of the contract that's in switching those out more frequently, it's not as much of a problem. And I think they're called convenience centers. I mean, I call it the dump, but I know technically it's a convenience center. But if we start making it inconvenient, then we have a hard time calling it a convenience center because they're kind of outposts for, for the landfill. And I know, I get it. Sometimes perhaps more often than not, there's frequent flyers that are usual suspects that are taking advantage of, of them and using that for more commercial purposes. But you know, if, if you have somebody on larger acreage that's in the further reaches of the county, and I'm assuming this doesn't necessarily apply to, to Blue Cypress, that's kind of an anomaly situation. You know, I just think, and I, and I get there's lines and things of that nature, but anybody using a convenience center is used to that or should be, or they should be taking advantage of the curbside pickup instead.
True.
And I'm sorry to cut off your presentation. I just wanted to make sure I was able to give, I wasn't trying to.
Great comments.
The whole process on, on, on the trailers is to eliminate the commercial dumping, correct?
Yes.
As we discussed. So therefore very few commercial operations rent trailers. Very few commercial operations have six by eight trailers. They have these large ones that are displayed. So if you did a size this way, the average homeowner only has a small or, or rented trailer. That would be a way to discern as far as your regulation.
I just think there's going to be a lot of pushback that might.
Yes.
Provide more angst than be beneficial. And there's perhaps a better way to go about it than saying absolutely no trailers. And I think that puts the attendants in a bad position too.
And, and this, this is not to, you know, affect, I don't feel like this policy or procedure. And we can continue discussing it. We could look at phasing things in. It's not going to, we wanted to bring it up because it was a good time to sort of update and provide our, you know, vendors as to what the policy procedures will be that they're going to operate on and everybody to be on the same page. Certainly it does not affect their price in terms of how much labor they have. Obviously the driver's license, you know, checking that would affect another body on the site. But in terms of the days of operations and services that they, they provide, you know, we were just looking to establish some policy procedures that we could use, that they can use to guide on how we want them to be operated. You know, we, again, we use the word convenience, but at times the long lines make it inconvenient. And that's, that's what we're looking at. The, the vendors are responsible. So if the container is full, they need to pull it. They need to put an empty on the wall. That needs to be continuous throughout the day and throughout the days of operation. So they're still responsible for that in terms of their, their cost. However, what we find is that residents are inconvenient and other residents because of the long lines, because they're bringing large quantity of material that maybe the, the center's not, not, you know, ready or to, 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 to take.
And I've seen in, in a lot of cases where you have a giant convenience center and you have one, you have one truck that's open, but you have multiple slots. So instead of pulling around, you know, they have to stop at this first one and offload everything, whether it's in their trunk or trailer or the back of the truck. But there's, there's all these others you could, you know, it just seems like the queuing process could be more convenient or more efficient.
True.
Think of, you know, like picking your kids up at school. They move them through that line pretty quickly because you have to pull all the way to the front. You can't just stop.
Right.
Right here where your kid is.
Yeah, I think the, the rationale that I, I understand is if you have three empty containers and they're all open to be used, they're all getting filled at the same time. And, and so then when you want to, you, you'd almost have to stop traffic or you do it after hours or whatnot, right? To be able to pull those full ones off. So what they always try to do is keep an empty one there. Fill up, you know, one or two uniformly. And then they could switch the traffic to the empty one while they pull the full ones. That, that's kind of the rationale behind it, but I understand what you're saying. So.
And I can understand that, but I think just we need to be consistent in the fact that some of the, some of the procedures that we create are creating the problems that we're trying to solve with additional rules.
Sure. So, yeah, no, certainly we wanted to take the opportunity to bring some of these policies to you. Again, it, it, overall, besides the new, you know, requirement for checking driver's licenses, again, to try to keep out of county materials here. These are just policies to help guide the, the vendor. I mean, their, their scope of work is to operate them five days a week from seven AM to six PM. We don't, you know, guarantee any quantity of material. Basically if a container is full, it's got to be pulled and then brought to the landfill. The, you know, I guess we can cross the bridge when it's time related to the Sunday closure at the landfill and how that affects, you know, the convenience center. We, we typically have always kept the landfill open because the convenience centers are open. Cause you need to empty those containers and bring them in. Good suggestion about having extra empty containers on site, that they, they could just pull the full ones and, and, and do that. But generally we, we want the material, once it's full, to be taken to the landfill and, and brought in for disposal. So, but.
Vice Chairman Law?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple, a couple of things. A couple, a couple of little things, and I know, one thing also to keep in mind, you're talking about convenience centers, we all need to take a look at our trim notice to be truthful about convenience. We are paying for this service in our property taxes. By eliminating someone with a trailer, I don't agree with that, and since this is the only time we can talk about it together, if that trailer is not accepted in Roseland or Felsmere or even Gifford, and they have to drive to the landfill, and they decide not to go to the landfill, guess where that debris is going to wind up? Counterproductive. So I'm, I'm against banning trailers to start with. Second, we don't know exactly, because after ten-one, when the new process starts, we don't know the volume that's going to happen at our convenience centers. And finally, with the driver's license check, that could lead to some other issues that would take hours to talk about, but as an example, if the driver doesn't live in Vero, but his passenger has a driver's license, is he or she accepted to dump?
Good question.
There's a lot of variables.
Sure, sure.
One person in the truck may have a Vero license. So when you start drilling down on who can dump and who can't, I would, I would offer caution.
Okay.
There are some protected individuals who have confidential licenses as well, and it may not show. That's just another thought.
No, understand. So we'll, we'll continue to review these, you know, sort of proposed policies and procedures. Again, we're not asking for any decision at this time, we just wanted to kind of make you aware that, that this would be an opportune time when the new agreement goes into effect, October one, that we provide some good, clear guidance on, on how, how we expect these centers to be operated and managed. And we're, we're trying to look at efficiencies, look at convenience, and, and so on and so forth, but we'll, we can bring this up at, at another time before we make any final decisions. Just a reminder, we have a cone of silence in effect, staff and the board is not engaged with any proposed vendors. And again, we have a bid opening on Friday for the convenience center and next Wednesday for the landfill.
Did we get a decent amount of bids, or?
Um...
Or, I don't know, I don't, I, we don't need to know who they are, it's not what I'm asking, I know there's a cone of silence.
Jennifer gave me the finger, so I, I, I'll just say we have three prospective bidders for the landfill, and we have two for the convenience centers.
Awesome, all right.
That sounds great.
So we have choices.
We have choices. Asked everybody to sharpen their pencils.
Thank you for the update, you don't need us any further?
No, thank you so much.
Appreciate it, lively discussion. I do want to close, many, some of you may remember County Commissioner Kenneth Mott, well, at least, at least two of you do. You, you remember?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, while you were... He served between nineteen ninety-six and two thousand and four. He served admirably, and he was not only a veteran, but a committed member of many organizations who improved the environment known as Indian River County. He has recently passed, just, just about two weeks ago, and there'll be a service, I believe it's, we'll make a march, it's at March twenty-seventh at Strunk Funeral Home, but we want to express our, our wishes of condolence to the family and to the citizens he served. Thank you. Seeing anything further? Meeting is adjourned.